Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy to have all of you with us on this beautiful August 19th, 2024. Welcome to our Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting. And I want to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome you all here. And with that said, we'll move right on into it. And I will ask Vice Chairman Mark Marion to lead us in the invocation and pledge. Commissioner Marion?
Let us pray. Almighty God, come to you tonight asking your blessings upon this meeting and everyone in attendance. Be with us and give us the wisdom. Go about the county's business. To do what we think is the best for the Surrey County citizens. Be with our armed forces, foreign at at home. Our police, fire. Our medics, anyone, any man or woman in uniform. Again, I ask that you be with us tonight. As we go about the county's business, and these many blessings we ask in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I see some elected officials and I see school board, town of Pilot Mountain, Mount Airy, town of Mount Airy. Most of you folks are either on the agenda or will be involved in some of these agenda items. And I will call, recognize you at that time. I wanted to say that as well as, um, looks like a big crowd here. So I'm gonna try to move right along and get into our meeting. And with that, gentlemen, you have read tonight's agenda. Quite lengthy, and I am looking for an approval for the agenda. I need a motion.
Still previous chairman.
Motion, but Commissioner Gouens, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and the agenda has been approved. Also, in your pocket, you will see the meeting minutes of July the 15th, 2024. Seems like up with just a couple of days ago, time's moving quickly. But with that, if you've had a chance to read them, I am looking for a motion to approve the July the 15th meeting minutes.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for Commissioner Marion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and the meeting minutes of July the 15th are approved unanimously. Uh, moving into the consent agenda, we try to kind of tell you what's going on. It's basically, we're doing our housework and some things that, that would take a lot of time to go over that we feel like, uh, that we can get done in consent. And with that, uh, to give a little more transparency to what we're talking about, I'm gonna ask our county manager, Chris Knopf, to present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item are the tax department end of month summaries, charges and reports. Next is a position reclassification request from the health department. Next are the workers' compensation claims and settlement activity for the quarter ending June 30th. Next is a position title change in the permitting office. Next are updated room rules for the service center meeting room or meeting rooms. Next are parks and recreation purchase requests. All of these have funding within their existing budget. They're basically asking to buy them about a month early. Next is renewal of signature for payroll checks and HR. Next item are the health department sewer repairs. This was something we pulled the board on a couple of weeks ago to get that process moving. It was discussed at the July meeting and the unanimous consensus was to move ahead. So this is the formal action. Next is budget amendment number one, and this is to make some adjustments based on increased grant funding for the health department. Next is a surplus request, various requests and multiple departments to surplus items for auction by our third party, Rogers Realty. Next is the resolution for the micro, micro threshold, excuse me, micro purchase threshold. Up to 30,000, which would match the state. And finally, a K nine retirement. This also would transfer ownership to the handler in the sheriff's department. And the K nine's name is Ace. And that's the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Gentlemen, any item on here that you want to pull out for discussion, feel free to do so. I know you've read through them, you understand what they're talking about. You may have questions, you may want more discussion. If so, say so. If not, I am looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. That Chris Knopf, our county manager, has just laid out. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Larry Johnson to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second? Second from Commissioner Bill Gouens. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and the consent agenda has been approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Right now, it is time for some special recognitions. And let's move down, gentlemen, and we will present them. We're gonna present these. We'll present these, uh, awards tonight as they've laid, given them to me in order. And first up on the agenda here are the first item is, um, for the, uh, the board would like to recognize some tele awards. And, uh, I want to just add a little something to that. Uh, we've got some folks here that do a really good job with, uh, Surrey on the go. And to exemplify how impressive these tele awards are, I would like for you to hear some of the competition that, uh, Peter went up against. And, uh, on the gold award, Pete's work beat out work from the Mayo Clinic, Quad Cities Television in Minnesota, South Carolina Educational Television, the West Virginia Public Broadcasting, and the Walt Disney Company. I'd say that's, that's a pretty good award, Peter. In the bronze award, you guys beat out or matched you and Nathan, the PBS, the Beaufort County Television, Hurst Media, Telemundo, Univision, and NBC News. So quite a bit of work. And if you will, I'd like to ask you, Peter and Nathan, to come up. And we would like to present you with some certificates on these outstanding accomplishments. Come on up. First of all, to Peter Golzinski. Where this award is hereby presented to you, this certificate of recognition as an expression of our board's appreciation for receiving multiple prestigious tele awards. The board would like to recognize the following tele awards. Gold winner, William Wagner, has been here over a century. Bronze winner, horn shucking frolic at Horn Creek. Bronze winner, students visit Minglewood Farm and Nature Preserve. The tele awards annually showcase the best work created within television and across video for all screens, receiving over 12,000 entries globally from six continents and all 50 states. Wow. This award is presented to you, Peter, this 19th day of August, 2024, with the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Gouens, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. And congratulations, sir, what an award. And to you, Nathan Walls, you are hereby presented this certificate of recognition as an expression of the board's appreciation for your building from the ground up. You started this thing and managing a conceptual, modern engagement tool with our citizens known as Surrey On The Go. This award is presented to you this 19th day of August, 2024, with the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Gouens, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. And thank you, sir, and what an award, and very good work. You know, you know, everywhere I go, almost every day, I don't know about you guys, but somebody will say something about Surrey On The Go. I mean, it is a widely watched channel. It's, uh, these guys have done a tremendous job. And we are proud of Surrey On The Go, and we're proud of Peter and Nathan. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's give them another round of applause. You want to pick, pick, you guys want, hey, you guys want to say something here? One of you, either one of you, both of you.
First of all, thank you so much, everybody. Um, one thing I want to make clear is this is a team effort. I, Nathan is amazing. He really is. Uh, we're like a two-person TV station. And the way that we, we run around and we get things done and the way he puts out fires and everything, um, he almost can read my mind. And one more, one other thing I would like to say, thank you, everybody that I rub shoulders with at Surrey County. Thank you for all you're doing, how hard you all work. I know how hard you all work. I've seen it on the camera, behind the camera, in front of the camera. I've, you guys are amazing, everybody, everybody. I really appreciate it. I mean, everybody, uh, it's such a pleasure to work for Surrey County. And I'm just gonna leave it at that. Nathan, it's your turn.
Just wanna thank Pete for saying that. First off, and, uh, thank you to the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, uh, for your support. Uh, Chris and Sandy, our department heads, everyone we work with, all the schools, um, our four municipalities we work with. Thank you for supporting us, always giving us great story ideas. Thanks for watching. Thanks for like, following, subscribing, all that on social media. Keep spreading the word and, and sharing all those good stories. It's a pleasure to work here.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Wow, my muscles would be bigger if I lifted these things more often.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
You wanna feel that?
Yeah.
They're incredible.
They are.
They make really great doorstops.
Wow.
Nothing to think about it.
No, sir. Did you feel it, Eddie?
The gold one on the middle.
Wow.
Turn it where you want. Let's get the, get the.
What do you want me to do?
Right. Is that the gold?
Yep, that's the gold.
Please in, guys. Sandy, you should give him a shot, everybody should give him a shot.
Alright, sorry, I'm not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. A great pleasure. Okay, I think we have some, uh, we got some, uh, Special Olympics award, I'm gonna start with you, Commissioner Marion. I believe we got a coach here.
Alright, yes, Heather.
Heather Rafalco? Sound good, doesn't it?
Congratulations.
The county of Surrey presented to Heather Rafalco, Coach, Special Olympics Surrey County Bowling. Is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your leadership, service, and dedication in the development of Special Olympics Surrey County athletes, resulting in the Special Olympics Surrey County Bowling Team success at the 2024 Special Olympics North Carolina Summer Games. Presented this the 19th day of August, 2024, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Gouens, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson.
Congratulations.
Okay, stay right here. Okay, gentlemen, let me pass these out before dropping. I think these read the same. And I think these read the same. I think the, the same. And I don't know if I do or not, we'll, we'll, we'll see. All right, we'll start off with, uh, we'll get this as best we can. I got bowling here, what do you got?
That's doubles, minus, team bowling.
Okay, so they read differently. All right, we're gonna call some of you folks up if you're here. Brett and Conyers? Not here. Uh, Brian Williams. Come on up, Brian. Brian, how you doing, sir? Thank you, sir. Thank you for joining us. Come on around here, we'll look back there. Come on around here with me, we'll look right back here at these people looking at us. Brian Williams, the Special Olympics Surrey County Bowling Team. You are hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Surrey County Special Olympics at the 2024 North Carolina Special Olympic Summer Games, and for earning second place in the bowling doubles competition. Presented this 19th day of August, 2024, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Gouens, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson. And congratulations, sir. Thank you. Uh, Brian Flipping, is Brian here? Come on up, Brian. And I think this reads the same. How about Seth Harrelson? Come on up, Seth.
How you doing, brother? Good, Seth, good season.
Come on up, you doing alright?
Good, good to have you.
Uh, Brian? And Seth, both of you are awarded a Special Olympics Surrey County Bowling Team certificate here tonight by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. This certificate of recognition is for representing Surrey County Special Olympics at the 2024 North Carolina Special Olympic Summer Games for earning third place in the bowling doubles competition. And it's, your award is presented this 19th day of August, 2024, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Gouens, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Thank you, gentlemen. Brian?
Come over here.
Yeah. Yeah. Hannah Norsworthy? And Valeria Norsworthy? Uh, so I'm gonna read this one, alright? This is for Hannah and Val, Valeria. Is here, you're hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Surrey County Special Olympics at the 2024 North Carolina Special Olympic Summer Games, earning fourth place in bowling doubles competition. Presented this the 19th day of August, 2024, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Gouens, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations.
Come on, y'all come over here.
Come right over here, right over here, right over here. We're all standing together here. Good job.
Okay, these are the team bowling, uh, certificates. Um, this is, uh, I'll read one and then I'll call all the names out. This one is for, um, Joey Kaufman. Um, a couple, well, come on up, and Lucas Kaufman, Joshua Davis, and John Dutton, and Levi Early. Okay.
Come on in, come on in.
Okay, uh, this is a certificate of recognition to Joey Kaufman, Lucas Kaufman, Joshua Davis, from the county of Surrey. Special Olympics Surrey County Bowling Team is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Surrey County Special Olympics at the night, at the 2024 North Carolina Special Olympic Summer Games, and for earning first place in the team bowling competition presented this 19th day of August, 2024, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Chairman, Mark Marion, Vice Chairman, Bill Gouens, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Congratulations, folks, Joey.
To continue on, Marty Combs. Angel Flanagan, alright. Hazel Moorefield. And Brittany Parsons. Got all four of them here. Hey, I believe they all read the same, wait on. Okay, the county of Surrey wishes to recognize, uh, these good four folks and their Special Olympic Surrey County Bowling Team is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for representing Surrey County Special Olympics in the 2024 North Carolina Special Olympic Summer Games, and for earning fifth place in the team bowling competition. Presented this the 19th day of August, 2024, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Van Tucker, Mark Marion, Bill Gouens, Eddie Harris, and Larry Johnson. Marty? Is yours? You Marty, right? Okay. Angel? Alright. Hazel? Alright. And Brittany? Alright, thank you. Okay, Danny, you wanna get their picture? Okay, let's, let's everybody smile, we're getting some pictures here now. Come on in, come on in. We appreciate all you folks, thank you. What, we appreciate you. You gotta know. Thank you. Congratulations all.
Sorry, I didn't know you should do that, I forgot.
I should, I'll take it down.
That's why it's all the way.
Yeah. Yeah. They're precious. Alright, folks, moving right along. We've come to tonight's, uh, part of the meeting that will allow open forum. Anyone out there that wants to come up and address the board, talk about Surrey County government, civics, most any other thing, I'm gonna give you an invitation here in just a second, if you will. Uh, keep your comments to about two or three minutes for the sake of time. Tell us what's on your mind, what you hear about. And I wanna give you a little bit of alert. Typically, a lot of times when we have open forum, we have a, uh, we have a public hearing that allows you to speak in on some of these things, but tonight we don't. This will be your time to come, and it will affect any topic that's gonna be on tonight's agenda. Uh, we have several things listed. Uh, we have, uh, we have the Pilot Mountain SRO request. We have, uh, an Elkin School request. We have, uh, presentation on the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce. Any of these things is gonna pique your attention. Now's the time to chime in before we take up these things on the agenda. So with, yes, sir? The Red Hill Creek Community Center, that was, that's another item on, on our agenda, and, uh, don't think it was printed out in the main one here, and I overlooked it. Thank you, Ed. Uh, any of these things you wanna chime in on now will be the time to come up and make public comment. And with that, the forum is now open, and I will invite you to come and say what's on your mind about these topics on the agenda or any other thing. Come on up, tell us your. Come on up. Tell us your name and your phone number. I got one right here. Your name and phone number, please.
Sharon Dawson, 336-368-9691. And I'm gonna read this so that I don't forget anything, 'cause I might. But I wanna speak to you tonight, all you gentlemen, regarding the situation surrounding the SRO for Pilot Elementary. My understanding is that during the budgeting process in a meeting much like tonight, the county commissioners committed to funding the SRO for Pilot Middle School and East Surrey High School. For that, we say thank you. The Pilot Mountain City Commissioners, as I understand it, committed to fund the SRO for Pilot Elementary. Then, two weeks before school starts, social media blows up with the announcement that there'll be no SRO for Pilot Elementary. Too many times I've sat in this commissioners' meeting, not this one, but one just like it, and have listened to city management ask the county commissioners to come in and fund and clean up projects due to their inability to manage their own budgets. When the county has to step up to cover costs, it means they have to pull funds from other countywide initiatives or projects. Well, I'm making the assumption that you guys don't have a slush fund of $50,000. So I'm just making, that's just an assumption I'm making. But at some time, the county will have to and should say no to covering cities' obligations that they have committed for. But I am asking you today, as a citizen, to please consider covering the salary of the SRO officer for Pilot Elementary. Our students, our teachers, our admin staff, they deserve to know they can walk into their classrooms, into their school, and be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am. Give us your name and phone number, please. Welcome.
My name is Jan Foster, and my phone number is 980-330-0955. I come here to represent the dogs and cats of Surrey County. I've got a little bit of literature for everybody. I've done some research on some grants, and I thought I would pass it out to each college who's in there. If you have time to look at this.
Oh, okay.
What you could do is have somebody acquire them, know you're getting ready. Think y'all got three, hope, hope. So basically, I'm here because Surrey County, I moved here five years ago. I'm a retired registered nurse for 44 years, so I have a passion about my causes. Saying that, I was in DC on January 6th, so I'm very passionate about what I do. The animal shelter leaves a lot to be desired here. The intake for cats so far this year has been 798. Dogs has been 1,020. And we, they have put down 514 cats and 272 dogs. That is 65% of the cats and 27% of the dogs. Well, 27% doesn't sound that bad till you hear that that's 272. That sounds a little bit worse. I've gone through other counties. Yakin County, their budget is only 350,930. And it's $100 to get a dog, 85 to get a cat. If they're already spayed and neutered, it's only 45 and 25. Wilkes County, they have a budget of 7,83913. Their adoption fees are 75 for a cat, and dogs range between 95 and 105. That is being little dogs are 95 and big dogs are 105. I don't know why they make that distinction, but Forsyth County has a budget, they have a beautiful place, of 1.3 million. They have their adoption fee set at 125 or less. I guess that means if they're already spayed or neutered, then you don't have to pay as much. Ardell County is where I came from. I was raised once in Salem, spent most of my adult life in the Statesville Lake Norman area. Their budget is 1.8 million, and their cats go for 80, their cats go for 65, and the dogs go for 80. They also have a program that if you have WIC or Medicaid, $30 covers your spay and neuter. Alexander County, I couldn't find their budget. I don't know why, but couldn't find it. Their adoption fee is 75 for a cat or a dog, and the county can purchase a voucher for $80. States County, again, I could not find their budget, but they're a little bit high. Their adoption, they're the closest to Surrey County, is 175 for dogs and cats is 125. Rowan has a budget of 1.9 million, and their adoption fee is 85 for a dog and 84 cat. You can also get a voucher for $70. I have adopted animals out of Rowan. I have brought my voucher to Surrey County to Elk and Veterinary Hospital. They took it. I don't, you know, they took it in Boxville when I went there. So I'm not saying that these other counties won't take vouchers if you take it to your vet. You know, if they, if they say we can't take that county's voucher, then, you know, they're not in it for the right reason, so it's time to change vets. Surrey County has a budget of $815,660. The adoption fee is the highest of any of the counties that I've mentioned. I just adopted a puppy there two weeks ago, $220. Cats are 200, highest fee anywhere. I don't understand where all of that money is going when the budget for Surrey County is almost as high as what they're getting in Forsyth, and they have a beautiful place, and their, their adoption fees are much lower. Now, the average salary for a veterinarian, now this is probably one just coming out, you know, not been out long, and this doesn't include their bonuses, is $122,782. We've got 36 out of 120 shelters in North Carolina that are no-kill shelters. North Carolina kills the most animals in their shelters, third in the entire nation. So we got a real problem here. I am proposing that one of the commissioners call the vet, there's, there is eight or nine veterinary offices in this county. Now, there's no reason why these vets cannot help with this problem. Okay, I'll shut up.
No, it's all right. I'm gonna give you just a minute to wrap up. Go right ahead.
The problem is that, you know, they don't want to help, you know, and so I propose that one of y'all, it would be better for one of the commissioners to call these vets and ask them, could they not give one day a month that they do spay and neuters? And rotate that? And that's charity, so that's tax deductible. Why could they not do that? If they can't agree to doing that, then, like I said, they're not in the veterinary business for the right reason. They're in it for money, and that's it, and you need to be looking for a different vet. So that's what I'm proposing. I'm proposing that one of y'all, or whomever takes care of budgets at the animal shelter, applies for some of those grants, and it needs to be done now if it's not already too late for next year. As you can see, only one handout, one shelter got $50,000. We could expand that shelter over there, that way you could keep more dogs longer and not put them down so quickly, and more dogs could maybe be saved if we could lower the fee, get the vets in on the spay and neuter, get some help with those grants to expand the shelter, keep more dogs for a longer period. Now, I've got other things, but my time's up, so I'll shut up. But anyhow, that's my calls, and I'm not gonna stop, and y'all are probably all gonna hear from me again. So my name's Jan Foster. Eddie Harris, I got to talk to you, too.
All right. Thank you.
Because I'm from Elkin, and you're supposed to be over Elkin.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. We'll hear from you again. Thank you for your passion. Okay, do we have another speaker? Yes, sir. Tell us your name and your phone number, please, sir.
Name's Robert Sweeney. Phone number's 352-3433. I'm here in support of Ms. Gail Brown here over the Red Hill Creek Community Center. I just learned of this last week. Now, thank y'all for your time for listening to us tonight. We all know that Red Hill Creek is known for drugs. Before Wybety took this center over, the community was a part of it. We had gatherings there, the community spoke to each other. I'd like to see this back in the community's hands, that they could talk to each other and have a community dinner or whatever, that the community would get back to where they talked to each other and get some kind of program started in Red Hill Creek to get the drugs out of it. We're losing our children in this, in this community, and we need something, some way. A lot of these people will not enter the doors of a church or anything else to hear nothing, but some kind of program at this place that they would come and maybe try to get some help to get off these drugs. I see the community could be used again. I just learned last week that Wybety was not using it no more, and they've been there for 25, 30 years. So I feel like this community center needs to be put back to the community, that it could be used for the community in a, in a special way, in a good way. Gail knows more about it than I do. I just thank you for your time, but that's just my view.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else for open forum? We'll get to next. Yes, ma'am. If you will, pull the microphone down there. Thank you, ma'am. Tell us who you are and give us your phone number, please.
Crystal Pettit, and it's 336-978-1571. And I'm, too, I'm going to try to read just so I don't leave anything out. So I'm attending tonight's meeting as a concerned parent of a child at Pilot Mountain Elementary, not only concerned for my child's safety, but the other almost 400 students at Pilot Mountain Elementary. So let me begin by thanking you guys for partnering with the school board and partnering with Sheriff's Department to ensure that on the day one that our students receive the same uniformed officer in our school as the other schools in the county. I'm hoping that I can gain a better understanding on behalf of the other parents in the school, but to gain a better understanding of how we landed in this current situation. As I've continued to research this, the one fact that I have determined is that the communication provided by the Board of Commissioners of the town of Pilot Mountain differs, or at least is in contrast, with other various resources. It was my understanding that they felt as though that perhaps there was some miscommunication somewhere along the way. It was perhaps that that, that had everything to do with their not approving the salary for an SRO at Pilot Mountain Elementary School. With that being said, I have not found such evidence to support that claim. Factually speaking, $20,000 was provided to both Pilot Mountain and Dobson to help absorb the first year's salary for an SRO at those two remaining schools in the county. And perhaps not ideal for a number of reasons, but Mount Airy and Elkin have set a long-term precedent in the approval to fund the SROs in their respective municipalities. So in civil law, a previous court decision that can be used as an authority to inform future decisions in similar cases, precedent is part of the doctrine of stare decisis, which requires courts to apply the law in the same way with cases that have similar facts. And a court of law, such an approach would perhaps ensure that people with similar situations are treated in the same way with similar facts. It's equally. This same thought can be applied in this matter. Mount Airy and Elkin have set a precedent in funding SROs in their municipalities. Dobson followed suit. It is unfortunately unconscionable to me that Pilot Mountain chose not to follow the precedent here, particularly understanding that this was not a surprise. To you, the county commissioners, thank you for ensuring the safety of our children at Pilot Mountain Elementary and for partnering with the Sheriff's Department and the Board of Education at the county level. My husband and I have raised our children under the direction that the right decision perhaps is not always the easiest decision. If we could better understand the current debate over the funding for a dedicated SRO at Pilot Mountain Elementary, and moreover, how this debate presented itself so late in the game, thank you in advance for just considering the funding. In light of the current staffing situation with the police department in Pilot Mountain, as a parent, it is my sincere belief it is in the best interest of the children and the staff and their safety that a Surrey County Sheriff's Department deputy be considered as a long-term solution, not necessarily because it's not the responsibility of the town of Pilot Mountain, but because our children deserve a well-trained, well-equipped officer on the campus, and perhaps that need can be better met if provided by the Sheriff's Department. I thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, we have another speaker. We're open forum.
Gail Brown, Red Hill Creek, President of the Council. I'm here to ask that you all give us a chance to get the community center back so that we can, again, have, have, have community events. When Head Start took the center over, we didn't think about it consuming the whole building, and when they took it over, we didn't have room to have events there. So, and as you can see, I submitted some information. We, we are financially able to care for the center for years ahead, and the people in the community, we all volunteer all of our time and money, and we do events to raise money to keep the bills paid, and we would like that opportunity again, and we do, as Mr. Sweeney was saying, you know, we do have the drug problem, and at that time, back in, before Head Start started, the families went in and we had our children with us, and as I told some of the ladies in the community the other day, I sat and cried because I thought about that, and I thought, I just wonder if we had not let Head Start in and kept the family units and the community unit together, if that would have helped our young children, and now they're younger adults that are in trouble that need help and guidance to get back, and that's what we, most of us, the retirees of the community, want to get back, get that started back, and bring those children in. Some of them are living in the woods, some of them have no food, and we want to do that, and, and just the, the younger children, too, the younger generations, we want to bring them back in and teach them ways that we learned, that we knew from our parents. And so that's what I'm here to do, to ask the commissioners, if you would please, to just give us the building back. I know that you've put in the paper that you want to sell it. That may be an option for us, and so I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, anyone else for open forum tonight? Anyone about anything? Okay, seeing no more takers, thank all of you that's coming up to express your comments, and moving right along, I'm gonna ask Dr. Steve Yocely with the Great, Greater Mount Area Chamber of Commerce to come up and give us an update. and give us an update. Steve, how you doing, sir?
I'm great. Thank you, Chairman.
Good to have you.
Great to be here. I have been a, I'm not a native of Surrey County, but I've been a, a resident. I've lived and worked in Surrey County for one month longer than fifty years now, so I consider myself a native now. But I do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. As you know, the Mount Airy, the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce is an ardent supporter of businesses and government, governmental entities in Surrey County. And I'm here tonight to give you an update for the last six months of 2024 for our Public Policy Committee. You were given a detailed written update, so in the interest of time, I will summarize. We have written letters of support or opposition to three federal bills. There are some good things that come out of Washington. As you know, there are a lot of not very good things. And we did write two letters of support and one letter of opposition that won very bad bill. In June, Public Policy Committee Chairwoman Tonda Phillips attended the 2024 Governmental Affairs Reception Roundtable sponsored by the North Carolina Chamber of Commerce in Raleigh. During this meeting, North Carolina Chamber President Gary Salamito gave updates on what the North Carolina Chamber has accomplished this year, what their five-year goal is and what they but plan to focus on for the remain, remainder of 2024 and in their five-year plan. Public Policy Committee has had meetings with Senator Ted Buds and Senator Tom Tillis's office to keep them informed about the needs of businesses in Surrey County. We hosted Tom Barkin, Barking, the president of the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond. And I know several of you attended the August first State of the Surrey luncheon here in Dobson. Lunch and learn with knowledgeable local speakers Jeff Sedlasek and Blake Moyer. But in closing, I would like to invite you to two of our upcoming events. On Tuesday, September the seventeenth at six o'clock at the Earl Theater in Mount Airy, there will be a candidates forum. And I know some people in the room will be, definitely will be in attendance of that. And also a little bit further out, there's a lunch and lecture series planned at White Sulphur Springs. And that's on Thursday, November the twenty-first at eleven-thirty until one o'clock. And we welcome State Senator Eddie Settle, Eddie Settle, who will give an update on things that are happening in Raleigh. Thank you for your time and it's a pleasure to be here again.
Yes, sir. Steve, on your candidates forum, is this just candidates for the Mount Airy City?
No, it'll be Mount Airy and the Surrey County offices, the county commissioners and school boards. And I think maybe the soil and water conservation also. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right. I see Elkin City Schools is on the agenda next and with, in the absence of Dr. Steve Hall, I believe I see Rachel Creasy and John Altmuller come on up, please, and understand that Dr. Hall is not able to be here, so go right ahead.
All right. Good evening. It is our honor to stand before you and present this needs-based grant. I have with me Mr. John Altmuller, who is our maintenance director, and for those who don't know, I'm the finance officer at Elkin City Schools. So we were just notified Sunday that we're doing this, so just bear with me. As our district continues to grow, we're presented with a significant challenge and that is the need for more space to ensure that our students are receiving the education they deserve in an environment that is conducive to their learning. The project that we're proposing includes a strategic addition of twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet to our current middle school facility. We believe this addition, we believe this, uh, sorry, we believe this division, we believe this addition is essential not only to accommodate our growth, but to also enhance the educational experience and safety for our students. It will allow us to move our sixth graders from the elementary school where they're currently housed in the modular building outside to the middle school. Therefore, the sixth through eighth grade students will have an official true middle school with this addition. We believe this project is also crucial as it will end the daily transportation of these sixth graders for classes and it'll save instructional time for them. It will provide these young students with access to appropriate facilities and reduce the transition stress between different school environments. We also believe it'll assist any overcrowding issue at the elementary school. This addition will also include significant safety upgrades. It will enclose a covered walkway that is used by middle school students to access their courses and it will provide the middle school with a true front office space and a clearly defined public entry point on the first floor. Now, this is my favorite part. The total cost of this vital project is estimated at seven million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Thanks to the needs-based grant that we are hopeful to secure, the vast majority of these expenses will be covered. So we believe that the needs-based grant will fund around seven million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of this project. Therefore, we are only asking you to contribute five percent local match of the needs-based grant funding amount, which is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That is what we're asking from you. Now, the investment by our local community is not just in bricks and mortars of our schools, but it's in the future of our children and our community's growth. We believe this project will help to shape an environment where education thrives and our students are given tools to succeed today and tomorrow. We thank you for your support always. Are there any questions?
Gentlemen, questions? Mr. Harris, I believe this is in your neck of the woods.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, yeah, that is quite a lot of money to get for quite a small match.
Correct.
Indeed. And of course, the county just spent north of eleven million dollars down there at Elkin City Schools and, and we just cut the ribbon on the gym down there and it's a very nice facility and I'm happy for Elkin City Schools. I'm happy to represent Elkin City Schools. I'm, I'm a graduate of Elkin City Schools and my wife retired from there and my children went there. So I have a vested interest in making sure that Elkin City Schools succeeds and does well. Public education is a difficult topic sometimes for me in the world in which we live today. I hear people talk about public education and how we need to save public education and sometimes I think we need to save it from itself. But that's a different conversation for a different day. Let me ask you a question. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion on this board about, you know, obviously I've explained to these gentlemen the geographical nuances as far as Elkin, the city of Elkin and Elkin City Schools. And we even had a big conversation last Friday. We, Commissioner Marion and I did a presentation to the State Association down there and about the sales tax and the revenue that we get out of Wilkes and Yadkin County and how we get a lot of revenue actually out of Southern Virginia and Stokes County as well. A tremendous amount of revenue that, that drives the engine in this county and makes it work. Having said that, overcrowding is a concern of mine at Elkin. Overcrowding in any public school is a big concern of mine. And I suppose it begs the question, where does the overcrowding come from? What, what is driving this overcrowding in, in our public schools? And before I continue with that vein of conversation there, and, and I say all these things for, for the transparency of doing the people's business in public. I think people deserve to know what these five gentlemen up here think about a whole range of topics. And so I'm not really bashful about talking about any of them in public. The, do, do we get any capital monies, Elkin City Schools, from the counties of Yadkin or Wilkes? Any capital monies?
That I'm aware of. No.
Okay. And obviously, this board has addressed some of the issues with, you know, the per pupil allocation and, and the tuition rate at, at Elkin City Schools. And I think you folks have made some substantial progress in that area, which is good. I think the board would like to see that and quite honestly, I think when you take that, and, and you and I had the discussion about, you all have seen a drop in out-of-county students to Elkin City Schools. And I think the tuition, increasing the tuition rate is probably driving some of that. And I think when you increase it even more, I think it will probably drive some more of it. And I say that, I love the people of Wilkes County. I live on the county line almost. And I love the people of Yadkin County and Allegheny as well. And, and I don't, but my charge is the citizens of Surrey County and my charge is the, the, the students of Surrey County and the capital needs of the children of Surrey County and, and how those children make sure they have the facilities that they need to, to be educated. And I'm very proud of our public schools here in Surrey County and, and our facilities. Having said that, the, I do think there is the, the number of out-of-county students that attend Elkin City Schools in light of the fact that there is overcrowding. I think that it's patently discriminatory against children who go to Elkin City Schools who live, live in the geographical boundaries of Surrey County. And those children are my charge as, are the people who elect me and make sure that I do a good job and call me and tell me when I'm not doing a good job. But the, so the overcrowding at the elementary school, there's a whole host of questions that, that come to my mind and I'm not going to get into all of them here tonight. I guess it's, and, and I understand that there's a lot of teachers that live outside of Surrey County that teach at Elkin City Schools and my wife was one of them and our children were proud to go there. And I understand that you all have a policy that their children can go there and they should, and I'm, I'm a hundred percent for that. But I don't like the overcrowding. I have to, but I have to live in the world as it is, not in the world that I wish we had. And the, I don't like what's happened in our country in the last thirty-five years as far as our southern border. We have been invaded in this country. The southern border is a humanitarian apocalypse and a lot of the enrollment in students in Surrey County has been directly attributable to immigration. And I'm not picking on anybody because of their race or their whatever. I, you know, I'm just, this is my job to talk about these things and people need to talk about them in this country. And I hope between now and November that there's a lot more conversation about our southern border and the millions and millions of people that are coming from all over the world to this country for nefarious reasons. And, and I think the United States government is complicit in human trafficking and I think they have blood on their hands. And I think it is just, and, and the people who are dying from the fentanyl and what's happened on our southern border and it is wide open. The asylum process is a complete and total joke. But anyway, back to what we were talking about earlier. Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know that I'm passionate about this and I appreciate you indulging me. And I, as I said, it's the world in which that we have and I'm very proud of Elkin School Board. I think Elkin School Board, and I want to say that publicly, I think they've done a great job. And I like what the board has been doing lately and I fully support the Elkin City School Board. And, and I'm going to continue to support the Elkin City School Board and do what I can for Elkin City Schools. Mr. Chairman, if this grant was a substantial amount north of, of what it is, I think I probably would have some serious reservations about supporting this. But in light of the fact that, that the school could get almost eight million dollars and, and the county funding would be three hundred and some thousand dollars, I think it would be foolish not to support this and I, I am going to support this. I appreciate you, Rachel, what you've done down there at Elkin City Schools since you've been there in the very short time. And John, you're worth your weight in gold down there. You've got a tremendous background and my, my big worry is, and John, you may be able to address this. I, I don't want Elkin City Schools, of course, I'll be dead and gone, but to look like Baptist Hospital down there on four twenty-one forty business down there, you know, the, the place is out of room. I, I don't know if sometime in the next fifty years they'll build skyscrapers down there, but you know, it's, of course, if that, if there's that many kids there, then we're all in big trouble anyway, so. But tell us a little bit about what, what, what you got in mind down there, John.
So the plan would be to basically add five classrooms to the current middle school building. Part of them would be on the south end of the building, part of them would be on the north end of the building. If you can imagine out towards the student parking lot as well as back towards the auditorium. Basically, it would shorten the bridge that's there now between the middle school building and the auditorium. Also, that building, when it was built, it was a bare minimum and it was a, really a satellite of the high school. So it never really had its own identity. It never really had a, a, a formal entrance into that building for, for the public. So we would also, as part of this project, add offices and a, and an actual entrance into the building to give it its own identity that's separate from the high school.
You and I had a conversation about the, the lunchroom and all of the associated facilities and things that make a, a school function. Tell me a little bit about that again, John, if you would there, lunchroom and that sort of thing.
The, as far as the kitchen goes, the kitchen is adequate. There's really some, some additional square footage of dining area might also possibly needed in this project. I don't have official numbers on that piece of it as of now. I don't think it would be a tremendous amount more. You could push out towards Elk Spur Street. As you know, and you stated, that campus is tight. You've, you've got basically two house, two schools housed on a twenty-acre plot and a good part of it is vertical. And as you know, with doing the gym project, what a big piece that was in bridging that hillside together. But yes, there would need to be an addition in, for the dining room, part of the cafeteria to house that.
Where, where did you, where'd y'all get these cost estimations?
I got these cost numbers from Vinoy Construction.
Okay.
I actually had Pinnacle draw up some prelim, preliminary grants and I took them straight to Vinoy to, so I could get real numbers, current numbers, square footage. So, so the numbers came through Vinoy.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. I've got, just so I understand, how much overcrowding are you expecting? Is it, and could you tell me like in a range of time, five years, ten years, your projection for growth? I mean, is it, you're expecting twenty, thirty, forty, fifty? What's, what's the number in how long?
We haven't done projections on growth yet, but just from last year to this year, we've already seen just seventy-four students and a lot of that's in the elementary school just alone. I mean, they're growing a lot over there and it's in district students too. That's what's blowing my mind. The out-of-district students are actually decreasing. So we can definitely get projection numbers if you would like us to, to help facilitate your choice.
And seventy-four, you, you're talking about this school year?
Yes, from last year, last year fiscal year twenty-four to this year. It's the exact same time.
I understand.
We are still enrolling some students still, so this number could fluctuate still.
And not that they have to be, but I am curious. I always like to know how the elected officials on a public level feel. I, I don't, I could be overlooking someone, but I don't see any of your board members here. Could you, could you give a overview of what the board discussion has been? I'm sure you guys have talked to your board. I don't see any of them here in attendance. And what are their thoughts on this request and this application?
I just discussed it with our board just a few minutes ago. They have a meeting tonight, so none of them are here unfortunately. But after discussing with him, their main concern was about the cafeteria and it already being overcrowded and having more students moved over there on top of that. So maybe possibly looking into adding on to that.
So are they absolutely, we want this or?
They are in favor of moving sixth grade and expanding to middle school, yes.
Are they unanimous?
Yes.
Far as I know, yes.
They were when I discussed it with them enclosed.
All right.
We had an official vote there.
Gentlemen, any questions, discussion? Good?
What do you mean by good?
I mean, are you, do you have a question or?
No, not, not, no question.
Okay.
Would you like for us to get the numbers with the cafeteria addition as well, or how would you feel? How would you want us to handle that?
I, I think you have a deadline, don't you?
Correct. It's September thirteenth.
So we would have to take action tonight.
Correct.
Is that correct? You can, I suppose you can get us numbers later, Mr. Chairman. That's, I mean.
Well, if we took action, wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change anything if we took action tonight. I mean.
Right.
They just asked me to ask you, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, as far as the cafeteria, these, these numbers you have here aren't anything to do with cafeteria. Is that right?
It has nothing to do with cafeteria.
Yeah, well, you know, part.
So, so.
That, that would be additional.
It would be additional, but if, if you go solely by square footage, square footage cost, and I'm, I'm winging this. So you're talking basically five hundred and thirty six dollars a square foot. So if you added a thousand square feet, that'd be five hundred and thirty six times a thousand. I mean, that'd be roughly, you know, what your addition would be, you know, six hundred, plus six hundred thousand.
Right. The, well, you know, part of our job here is long range planning. And, and knowing what's coming down the pike and what we're facing from a budgetary perspective. So if you could get us numbers and so, I mean, you know, I mean, that's just a topic for a different day, I guess, but yeah.
So your timeline was September what?
September thirteenth is the due date.
We make one time. And this match, and I've asked this question before, that's a, that's a match for new monies that this board would have to find? Or if you had any extra monies that was in your, at your disposal, you would be able to add to that. You're going to ask this board for a match, even if you have any of this money? Or you, you're not going to do it without the match? I mean, I don't think the statute actually calls for a match specifically from coming from us. It just has to be a match of local monies. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding, five percent.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, I'm looking for suggestion or action?
I have, I have a known thought if you, if I could share with you.
Please do.
I, I've been on this board for over eight years. And we've taken care of Mount Aries and we've taken care of Elkin. And we've taken care of a couple, uh, three elementary schools on the county level. My understanding, our next, our next priority is our three county high schools. And so I, I would say that if I, I have a guarantee that they're going to be taken care of. I, I, I would, that would be my priority, Mr. Chairman. And I, I, I'm not against this at all, but if, in, in other words, I think Elkin needs to stand in line. After the three county high schools. That's my feelings. Whereas, and it all boils around money. So we haven't decided, I think a little presentation here later, I want to get, get them started with some, some fees and designs such as that. As me making a decision, I, I could, on Elkin, I couldn't deny it unless I have a guarantee that we're going to try to take care of the three county high schools. With their satisfaction, because they waited a long time and been patient with us.
Okay.
That's my feeling, sir.
I understand, I understand. And I know, I know that's, that's something we have discussed and planned for in our long term planning. I don't know exactly how far out in the future that is. I don't even know how far out in the future it is for this board would be prepared. But Chris, I'm going to ask you to weigh in on that part of it. Will, will you add anything to that as far as our ability to fund those projects that he refers to?
Well, I mean, we're going to talk about the design fees during my items, but I know three county schools is coming to the next meeting to ask for, I believe, a needs based application as well. So that's just two weeks away.
So that would mean they would come about the same time, should they both be granted?
It's going to be a high school project, so.
Same deadline.
Same program.
Same program. All right, gentlemen, I'm looking for action.
Mr. Chairman.
Or no action or wait to another meeting? What's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for a motion, um, I, I, I want to make the statement too, before I make a motion, that I agree with Commissioner Johnson. And, and I think Surrey County has, it's way overdue for Surrey County's facilities to be upgraded and looked after, and they are next in line. You know, this, and I intend to support their needs based grant as I supported Mount Aries. I don't know where these needs based grants will go. I, I certainly hope for sure that Surrey County gets one of theirs because it's a tremendous need. They have tremendous needs. The fact this is three hundred and some thousand dollars. You know, it's, I think it's worth allowing Elkin City Schools to, to apply for it. If they could get eight million dollars to help their facility, I, I think it would be a wise investment on behalf of Surrey County. But for the, for the matter, I do agree with Commissioner Johnson that priorities are priorities. Having said that, I will make the motion to allow Elkin City Schools to apply for a need based grant.
Okay. Gentlemen, have a motion on the table to allow them to apply for the need based grants at Elkin City Schools. Go ahead a second. Okay. Okay. We've got a second. Okay. Now is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're, we're, we're okay in that they apply for the grant?
Yep.
Does that mean we're okay in that we're going to come up with the five percent?
Well.
Is that, that's my question.
I think that if we took action on this motion, we would be, we, we're almost saying if you apply and get the grant, we'll come up with a match. I guess the answer to that is yes, even though I want to add in and make it three opinions. I think Surrey County Schools is way long overdue on capital expenses. And these high schools are an absolute must and for a long time behind the jail and some other things. We've put in the high priority list that has been one of our next, very next, outside of an emergency top priorities. Uh, I think we're just looking at a deadline here. They're wanting to apply and it's going to be about the same deadline that Surrey County Schools are facing on, on this need based grants. And so I guess the answer is, I guess we're committing to the match. But I don't think we're committing to what date we'll put shovels in the ground. And I think I am on board with you that before we put shovels in the ground, unless there's really good reasons why, we would certainly still put our Surrey County Schools, high school projects ahead of the, at the top of the list.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. We're not going, we, we use as an excuse that we've already spent so much money on Elkin. And it's going to deter from what we, what we do for Surrey County.
I won't never use that excuse.
Okay, all right. That's the reason I said.
I'm fine.
I won't even.
All right.
I'm fine.
Anybody else? All right, gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor to allow Elkin City Schools to apply for the need based grant. We have a second. We've had discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Record no, it's unanimous and you have received your wish and you may proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Next agenda item reads Mayor Evan Cochran, town of Pilot Mountain. I don't think I see Evan, but I did say at that point in time, I would recognize some of the folks I do see from the town of Pilot Mountain. And I would like to recognize Commissioner Scott Needham and Commissioner Donna Kiger. And I see Michael Bose, your town manager, and I don't know which one of you wants to come and and address this situation with the Pilot Mountain Elementary SRO request, but whomever that is, one or all, I invite you to come.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think you guys have a copy of Evan's letter in your packet. I'm happy to read it for you if, if you want. If not, our request is that the Surrey County Partner with, well, Surrey County Fund, it has a full time SRO at Pilot Mountain Elementary School. We are happy to be a partner in that any way we can. We're happy to have that person be a part of the Pilot Mountain Police Department. Or the Surrey County Sheriff's Office, doesn't matter to us. We are not picky. If they are one of our officers, we're happy to provide equipment and a vehicle. And I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you folks might have.
All right, Michael, I would like to ask you to read the letter.
Sure.
In the.
Happy to.
Of the mayor, if you will, I think for full transparency, it'd be fair to let everybody in the listening audience hear it.
Sir, this is a copy of Mayor Cochran's letter to you guys. Dear Chairman Tucker and Surrey County Board of Commissioners, I'm writing to you today to request that the Surrey County Board of Commissioners consider funding a full time school resource officer to be placed at Pilot Mountain Elementary School. It is my understanding that Pilot Mountain Elementary is the only Surrey County school that does not have a full time SRO. I believe that the taxpayers who send their children to P, uh, Pilot Mountain Elementary School deserve the same service as the taxpayers that send their children to Rockford, Mountain Park, Pilot Mountain Middle, East Surrey High, or any other school in the Surrey County School District. In the past, the town of Pilot Mountain has assisted Surrey County Schools with placing an SRO at PM, at Pilot Mountain Elementary. Unfortunately, the school district was unable to continue their share of the funding and the town board of commissioners decided to withdraw theirs as well. The vast majority of the students who attend Pilot Mountain Elementary are not town residents. And therefore, the Pilot Mountain Board and I do not feel that the town's taxpayers should bear the full cost of providing an SRO to this county school. Frankly, the board and I believe that this request should be coming from the Surrey County School Board. Nevertheless, we want to be part of the solution. The Board of Commissioners are willing to, are writing to you to request your assistance in addressing this concern. The town is willing to hire the officer that is to be placed at Pilot Mountain Elementary, or the officer could be part of the Surrey County Sheriff's Department. If the officer is to be hired by the town, we would be glad to assume the costs of purchased equipment and provide a vehicle for the officer. We'd only ask that the county provide funding for the salary and benefits. Based on our current entry level salary, this is approximately sixty four thousand per year. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate. To read, reach out to me or our staff. Sincerely, Evan J. Cochran.
Okay. Anything else you guys got to add to this request?
I, I, I'm happy to answer any questions you folks have. And my moral support is here as well.
I, I would like to speak. So my grandson goes to Pilot Mountain Elementary. And I feel like he's as safe there as he's ever been, even whenever we had an SRO there. But if I could do anything, I would always have an SRO there. I'm not sure how one school ended up without one. And we do want to work with the school board to, to get a, that position filled. I'm very disappointed at the way that this came to light. I think it was reckless and very careless to blast it on social media that Pilot Mountain Elementary School was not protected with an SRO. And, and besides the fact that it got the community worked up, thinking that our children weren't protected. It also has given the appearance that it's us against them, the town of Pilot Mountain against the school board. And, and it's not that way. We worked with them before, whenever we had the, the SRO. We want to have one. We only have fifteen hundred people in Pilot Mountain. We have a very small budget. And we don't collect that much from our property taxes. We spend more than that on our police force. So we can't do it without help. So I'm just asking you to help us, help us do whatever we can to get that funded.
All right, anything else? All right, if you will, this, this process on SRO funding involves some major people at the, in the game here. Everyone that has a stake in this game so far with SROs involves the, the municipalities of which Elkin provides a couple of SROs. Mount Aries provides three, I think maybe about to add, add another one is four. The Taylor Dobson adds one and there was one at Pilot Mountain and then there's not one there now. But thank you for your presentation and if you will, I'll let you guys sit down and I'm going to ask another stakeholder to come up. Dr. Reeves, I see you have along with your board, Chairman Dale Budget and Clark Gouins, TJ Bledsoe, Tony Hutchins, Kent Whitaker along with you. And I will ask Dale Budget Chair, I will ask any and all of you. But if you will, Dr. Reeves, I would like for you to weigh in on this topic as you are a major stakeholder. And I would like to ask the Sheriff Department as well, since they are a partner in this process, along with the county and the school systems and the municipality in which it revolves around. I don't see anybody with the Sheriff's Department. But if you will, Dr. Reeves, I'd like to ask you to come and comment on your perspective on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Tucker. I think my board members are going to come speak first and then I'll, I'll provide some follow up information.
However, you guys want to do it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you inviting us here and letting us be here tonight and letting us speak. My name's Tony Hutchins. I'm with the Board of Education. And I'm going to tell you, things have changed over the years. Mayberry, Mount Aries, if you watched the little, the TV show that come out in the fifties and sixties. They would lock the jail up and go home. Had any kind of little problem, they'd call and sheriff would just run back to it. It ain't like that anymore. There's another thing that I believe that they had and that was honesty. And I don't think we're having a whole lot of it here, just to be honest with you. I've been greeted at the grocery store with why didn't we pay our part that we agreed to pay? That happens to not be the truth. Because we did provide the twenty thousand dollars upfront. And we kept our end of the bargain. It seems like the other end of the bargain wasn't kept. Now, I'm blunt. I'm blunt in the way I speak. And this should be a countywide thing. I appreciate what you guys do. I want to say that publicly. That we got four SRO officers from you guys this year and you will never know how grateful we are. Because you, you do know that the hours that you sit around worrying about how you're going to get this done and how you're going to get that done. And you give us a gift and we're grateful for that gift. And it looks like we're going to have to do this thing again. And I hate that we, that, that we're standing before you tonight, asking for it one more time. But the truth of it is, is there's been some misspeaking, as it is said, in the political arena. No one lies, they just misspeak. I don't want to accuse anybody. I just want you, I just want it understood that we did our part and, and you'll hear the evidence of that. So I'm going to step out of the way and let some of the other guys speak. Just want you to know how much I appreciate you.
Thank you, Tony Hutchins. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, allowing us to come and share tonight. I know Mr. Johnson attended our convocation. We had that, we, last week, start of the week. And that's the second convocation I've been a part of as, as a board member. But we had a special conclusion to that convocation. Sheriff Hight had all his SROs, members of his staff on the stage. And this is at the end of the session. And each SRO was able to state their name and what school they were associated with. And each time they, they shared, there was a cheer that went up from that respective school. The employees, the teachers, administrative staff from those respective schools. And I thought that was just a amazing, special time to conclude, in an appropriate way to conclude what we were able to attain through what the commissioners approved earlier. And I'm just here to say I appreciate, as I served on the safety committee the first year, coming to you and with our request, how y'all stepped up and, and really afforded us the opportunity to have the SRO in each of our schools. And we're so appreciative of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. All right, Gouins.
Good evening, gentlemen.
How you doing, sir?
Fine. Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. I don't think I've ever spoke before this board before. I can't remember, but. spoken before this board before. I can't remember, but I just want to tell each one of you how much I appreciate you. And I'm in my short rows as far as being a Board of Education members. I know you all know that, but if there's anything this board has been written together and really worked for as a SRO officer, and all the schools, safety is our most important thing for our children and our teachers and all the employees of our schools. And I'm not going to go into what was said, and he said, she said, or whatever. I just want to thank y'all for what you've done, and I'll let Dr. Reeves take care of that part. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Goins. Mr. Bajet, Mr. Dale Bajet, Chair, how you doing, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate it. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for letting us come tonight. As you've already heard, the number-one priority in our system is the security and safety of our kids and our staff. And without your help, we would not be where we were at beginning this year. We have 20 schools. Surrey Community College has an officer there on their campus for early college. That means we have 19 schools. Our board, at least for the last four years, has had a priority of getting a SRO in every school. And without your help, you guys either match, or with the four you just provided, totally fund nine of those. So, without your help, we could not make that happen. So, thank you for that. I appreciate it. And we've requested four this year, and you gave us four, because that's what we thought we needed as of April 30th. So, I just want to thank you for that. Thank you for your continued support and your priority of safety and security, because we know, we've talked to you, and we will be coming back to you for the needs base, but based on some suggestions you made with us back in the spring, we're going to make some adjustments to that, because we think it's smarter and a better way to do it. So, thank you for everything you do. I'll let TJ and Dr. Reeves finish up with it, but I just want to say on behalf of the board, thank you very much. Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Chairman Bajet. Mr. TJ Bledsoe.
Good evening, gentlemen. I hate that we're having to be here tonight and have this conversation, but I felt like we needed to speak. I wanted to, I've not said anything publicly at all since my initial Facebook post, so I'm the one that got the, opened the dam, I guess you could say. But I just want it to be known publicly that I tried every other option. We tried conversation. We tried everything that we could do. And the safety of the children and the staff in that school, I knew there would be mud slung at me when I made those comments, and we let that be known, but that was okay. I have to say that when I had the conversation with our board, we were unanimous. Could we do this? Could we fund this until we can find something that, you know, find another solution? And our board never wavered. But I just want to say publicly that I thank you all for what you've done. I understand that with a budget, especially of this magnitude, and everybody's coming with their hand out. I understand that, but I appreciate that you all have seen the priority, and just like the Town of Dobson has seen the priority. And I thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Mr. Bledsoe. Dr. Reeves.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Commissioners. Certainly, we appreciate the partnership on multiple levels. I'm a former social studies teacher, and I found that probably the easiest way to teach history was through a timeline. It always worked for me. And often, I find linear things working from left to right kind of work in my brain. So, if you'll give me just a few moments, I just want to go back through a timeline with you verbally, and I don't have a presentation. I don't have a whiteboard, but if I did, I'd have it, and I'd write all over it. Going back to 2013, when I started here as superintendent, we had three SROs, one at each high school, and those were funded out of our funds, at-risk funds. And shortly thereafter, a state grant came out, and we were able to put four middle school SROs, but it was with a match. And Commissioner Tucker, I remember vividly you asking the question in probably 2014 with that grant end, and I couldn't answer that question. Does anybody else remember those questions he asked? I remember it. We were in the old building. But certainly, we have applied for those grants to fund the middle school, and we've applied for those grants now to fund the elementary SROs. And obviously, the world's a different place 10 years later. 11 years later, the world's a different place. And so, we did receive a grant, an elementary grant, on October 26, 2022. It was a Center for Safer Schools grant for $264,000. So, during that, we received that two-year grant, but notice the time period. We got it in October. Well, it started July 1st, and so, we couldn't necessarily spend the entire grant, because we're getting it a third of the way through that new school year. And obviously, I can't control what happens in Raleigh. We were grateful we got the grant. I came to this board, I think in December, talking about elementary SROs. The board chair and I also met with the Town of Pilot and with the Town of Dobson during that time, and Dobson had an interim town manager. Misty Marion was the town manager before Jeff Selacheck had taken over. But the whole point was this. We wanted a uniformed officer in all of our schools. It was that important to have a uniformed officer. And we love the Sheriff's Office. They're great to work with, but really, in thinking about what Elkin and Mount Airy are doing, we were trying to offset the cost and spread the cost through multiple agencies, and we knew what Elkin and Mount Airy were doing to help fund officers in the city of Mount Airy and the city of Elkin. So, why not ask Dobson, and why not ask the Town of Pilot? And so, we did. And we explained our goal and the potential grant funding that we had. And Mr. Kevin By, who wrote the grant, he called the Center for Safer Schools to make sure that we could give $20,000 upfront as a one-time cost. We made sure of that, and so, Mr. By made that phone call. So, we met with the Town of Pilot, met with Mr. Boz, and met with Misty Marion, and we took the sheriff's MOU, the one that we've created and been working on, and we copied for the town agreement. On November 30, 2022, I emailed the town Mr. Boz, and he said they were good with the language of the MOU, wanted some minor changes. On December 14 of 2022, I quoted in the email, said, "I have $20,000. I can contribute to the SRO this year only for the grant." And we used that money, because we knew we couldn't spend it all in the fiscal year, because we couldn't get all those deputies employed, because there was also a shortage, if you remember those conversations. Again, sent the same email to the interim town manager at Dobson, Misty Marion, on December 14 at 4:08 PM. So, I sent the same email the same day. And then, on January 2, we were finalizing the MOU, because the Town of Pilot really wanted to move forward with this. They liked the idea. And I sent Mr. Boz another email as a reminder, "We are committed to providing $20,000 between now and July 1 for the position." So, I wanted to make it clear, this is one-time funding. We don't have funding in the future, but we can help you with some of the startup costs, both with the Town of Pilot and with Dobson. On January 11, we think, this is from Mr. Boz, "We think we can put Sergeant Jason Christman in the school on January 30." And I'll get this signed over to you, meaning the MOU. So, obviously, they were okay with that. And I think it was right around January 30 or right in February, Sergeant Christman started, and he was there for the remainder of the school year. August of '23, he started, and we got the school year started. And so, at that time, Dobson and Pilot were the only two schools that had full-time SROs. We were splitting with the other county schools, and we felt very fortunate. But again, we were trying to put as many officers in our schools as we could possibly do. And so, from August 23 to October 23, Sergeant Christman worked at Pilot Elementary School. And then, in October, I received a phone call from the town manager explaining some of the issues they were dealing with, and that they were going to have to really suspend those services of SRO due to just the lack of folks in the police department. In January of '24, I emailed Mr. Boz, just asking, what's the status of our SRO? Because I was concerned. We didn't have coverage there, and I knew we'd had deputies from the Sheriff's Office that were stopping by, and maybe some of the folks from the Town of Pilot, but it wasn't the same as having a full-time officer. The principal had communicated her concerns to me. And so, that was this past January, and obviously, we went through this, we finished up the school year. So, then on February 28, we met with Commissioners at Nana McMeadows. Thank you for having us at your budget retreat, and we discussed our capital needs. And I think we probably discussed this SRO request that we were going to ask for later. And so, that leads me to March 28, my budget memo to Mr. Knopf, and then the budget memo on March 28. And I'm not sure how you handle municipality budget requests, but they're probably due earlier, just so you can get them in your budget notebooks. But under school safety, we did request four officers, because I said currently, the Town of Pilot and the Town of Dobson provide two officers, and we have 12 officers paid for by grants directly by the county and by district funds. By adding four additional full-time officers, Surrey County Schools would then have an officer at each elementary school. So, at the time of the budget request on February 28, I thought we needed four officers. Certainly, I think my board, you've heard them say tonight, if they thought they needed five, we would have asked for five on February 28. And then, when we met with you, or excuse me, on March 28, when I sent this in, and then we met with you on April 30 for our budget review, and we discussed this, again, this request on April 30. It wasn't until May 24 that I received a phone call, or I had a phone conversation with the mayor regarding the inability to fund the position. So, that was the first time I was made aware that they weren't going to fund the position or were considering not funding the position. It was well after our budget presentation to you, both at April 30. And just like you do, our board met January, February, March. We had multiple meetings in March with budget work sessions. So, I just want you to know, there was never any intent on behalf of the board to not have an officer at every school. The intent's always been to have an officer at every school, always has been that intent. And had we known we needed five officers, we would have asked for five and not four, but we knew, we thought we needed four when we made that request. And we were so grateful to have that officer. And I know, I shared that information with my board at our June business meeting, and I know since after that meeting, Mr. Bajet contacted the mayor, and I believe Mr. Bledsoe contacted the mayor in both June and July, or in early July. So, that's really the timeline leading up to the day. We started school on August 12 with a deputy. We are paying that rate. It's an hourly rate, and it's pretty expensive. We certainly would like to extend the request. We asked for four, and now it's my understanding we need five. And so, we certainly want to have an officer in every school. It's made a tremendous difference. And I know Commissioner Goins and Commissioner Johnson, you were able to attend convocation, and you saw the support from our schools up on stage, and certainly the support of Sheriff Hyatt. Appreciate the partnership we have with him, and appreciate the partnership we've had with the Town of Dobson to keep their full-time officer at Dobson Elementary. We were not contacted during any budget deliberations during the fiscal year '23 regarding needing funding. That $20,000, didn't hear that in that fiscal year. So, again, I just say this. We want an officer in every school. We appreciate your support. Appreciate the support of this community. I'll take any questions you have.
Gentlemen, questions? Dr. Reeves, the school board did give the city of Pilot Mountain $20,000. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It sounds to me, if I got the dates right, only for two or three months that he served.
Yeah, it was, well, they started, again, I don't have the exact dates, but Mr. Boz's email, they wanted to start around the end of January 30, and that was through the end of the school year. And so, that time started then.
But before that, in the fall, was when they had problems within the department? And so, the SRO officer that you helped pay for only worked there for two or three months? Is that, I think that's what you said.
Two or three months. The three to four months in the spring, they finished that timeout.
They did.
They did. They finished that timeout, and then they started in the fall.
I apologize.
And I failed to mention this, but we have a memorandum of understanding, and it was a two-year memorandum of understanding that went through 2025. And so, it wasn't really on my radar screen, knowing that we had signed an agreement for a two-year program.
Memorandum of understanding between you and the Town of Pilot Mountain for
Yes, sir.
officer position. And knowing that you was only going to furnish $20,000 upfront.
Yes, sir.
One time. Okay. Gentlemen, further questions? I don't have any questions. I've got a timeline I'd like to discuss, too. All right. Well, yes, go right ahead, Commissioner Marion. Thank you, Dr. Reeves.
Well, I guess this is going to be the rest of the story. So, we were, I've got a timeline also, and to repeat what Dr. Reeves just said, in 2023 January 2023, agreements were reached between Surrey County Schools, Dobson, and Pilot Mountain to provide SROs at Dobson Elementary and Pilot Elementary through June 30, 2025. And I'm going to go ahead and read that memo, Dr. Reeves. Board members, see the email below to Michael Boz, Town Manager at Pilot Mountain. Notice that I comment, "We will provide $20,000 between now and July 1 for this position. No further mention of funding was made, and I was clear that $20,000 was only for the first year due to safety grant coming late in the fiscal year. Let me know if you have any questions." Travis. Good evening, Michael. Hope you and your family had a good Christmas and Happy New Year. My BOE attorney has cleaned up the MOU. Take a look. My BOE will approve this tomorrow night. As a reminder, we are committed to providing $20,000 between now and July 1 for this position. I look forward to working with you and the town on this exciting new initiative for both of us. All right. January 1, 2023, is made and entered into by and between the Surrey County Board of Education and the governing body of Surrey County Schools and the Town of Pilot Mountain, governing body of the Pilot Mountain Police Department. This is the MOU that was signed in January. Okay, the term of this MOU shall begin on January 1, 2023, and end on June 30, 2025, unless terminated earlier as provided herein. However, the parties shall review the terms of the MOU at least annually, and may amend it at any time in writing of mutual agreement. To my understanding, there was no mutual agreement. Okay, April 30, 2024. Surrey County Schools request four new SRO positions to allow each elementary school to have a full-time SRO. This request was made to the county and did not include Pilot Mountain Elementary. Big Daddy's always watching. All right. Commissioner Needham was at that meeting and didn't speak up. Okay, June 10, 2024, Town of Pilot Mountain Budget Hearing. Budget adopted SRO position at Pilot Mountain Elementary not mentioned. They passed their budget. They voted to defund their SRO, passed the budget, never mentioned it in their budget presentation. June 11, County Budget Work Session. Consensus of the board is to add the requested new SRO officers. Commissioner Johnson requested it. We named the schools, the elementary schools that will be, have the new SRO officers in it. And one of the commissioners even made a comment, "After this, it will be a line item in the budget, and I don't see any way we'll ever walk it back." All right. Mr. Needham was there again and never spoke, never said anything. After I get done, yeah. June 17, 2024, County Budget Hearing. Budget adopted with four new SRO officers included as requested by Surrey County Schools. Now, take note, I said June 17. Here's a nice two articles in a newspaper on June 22. Pilot Mountain Eliminates SRO Funding. County Budget Crosses Historic Threshold. This is when I, along with the other Commissioners on this board, learned of Pilot Mountain defunding their SRO. I immediately got on the horn with Sheriff Steve Hyatt, Chad Hutchins. Sergeant Chad Hutchins is over the SROs, and we said then, and I talked to a few school board members, we said then, there would never be one second that that school would go without an SRO officer. We would be sure that there was one put there. Okay? And then I kept hearing, I kept hearing this comparison between Dobson and and Pilot Mountain. And then I kept hearing, I kept hearing this comparison between Dobson and Pilot Mountain and the, thank God for Wayne Farms. And yes, absolutely, thank God for Wayne Farms with their budget. And I'm just going to go over it just briefly. In 2021, the town of Dobson's budget, this is including registration, taxed vehicles in, with the municipality, $833,640 in 2021. Pilot Mountain, 2021, $861,507. Pilot Mountain, 2022, $984,660. 2023, Town of Dobson, $875,779. Town of Pilot Mountain, 2023, $974,160. So what not taken into consideration is most of the big buildings in Dobson are county buildings, plus the college. They're not taxed, they don't get a tax base off of these, these buildings. And, and then if you want to go, I heard a lot of comments about, well, it's a county school, why don't the county commissioners and school board fund it? Well, that's great, because they said they always, already paid two taxes. Well, here's another, here's some more facts. The only thing that a municipality has to do on their, what, what do North Carolina cities and counties do? The city must enforce their building code to their buildings. That's the only thing a municipality has to do. But we do that. But we do it. The county does it. The county must provide law enforcement, jails, medical examiner, courts, building code enforcement, public schools, social services, public health, mental health, hospitals, parks and recreation, tax collection. So, you know, talking about municipality taxes, what you pay in a municipality is a luxury tax to get garbage pickup, whatever else it might be, but...
Maybe even participation in an SRO.
Yeah, but I just wanted to get those facts out. And Ryan Kelly did have two good articles right here. And it was kind of weird that we found out about it. And then when all the posting on Facebook happened, and I just want to reiterate, we don't do county business on Facebook. We want to be transparent on Facebook, and I was reading all those posts, and it was so hard to keep my hands off those keys, but I knew better. But when you, when you're posting on Facebook, or even an opinion piece in the paper, tell the whole truth, don't just tell part of it, it sounds good. Pilot Mountain broke the MOU, bottom line. So we would have loved to have known that when we were taking all our votes, but we didn't. I even seen on some of the posts that, call your county commissioners. I'm going, the county commissioners didn't know anything about it. So we do know now, and we thank the Surrey County Sheriff's Department, Surrey County Schools for stepping up and putting that SRO in that school. We will continue to have one in that school. That's what I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Marion. Any other comments, questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, me into what he said about the timeframe, we didn't know a thing about it till we read it in the paper, and had ample opportunity prior for us, I wish we would have noted, because I personally went to the school board, Mr. Travis Reeves, and I went to the sheriff's department, and even in public in our budget meetings, I asked more than once, how many do we need? It's my, I am adamant that we want to put, have one in every school in Surrey County, and thank goodness, those five commissioners, we were unanimous in that, regardless of the number, what it being, we was unanimous in that. And I thank the commissioners for that, and that number was four repeatedly.
And they even named the four schools that only...
That's correct.
That didn't share.
That's correct.
And it wasn't Pilot. Anything else, commissioners?
I just want to say, I hope we, we can come to better terms in terms of relationships with our municipalities. I think we have a good, I think we have good partnerships with our municipalities. I think we've done good things for our municipalities. And I think, I watch, I think the biggest thing for our citizens is to be informed. I watched the meeting on, on the go, the Pilot Town Meeting last Monday, and was a little bit taken back by a few things that were said, and some things that are left out. And, you know, we ran a water line to Pilot, paid a third of it, didn't have to do that. But we saw that as what's good for Pilot Mountain and Mountain is good for Surrey County. Economic development-wise, it's a good thing. And then that we bring the Armfield Center in a little bit on this thing, and, you know, most of these people are county residents that use the Armfield Center. And the same can be said for Reeves Community Center and for the Elkin Rec Center. I'm sure a lot of those people are not town residents. And so, you know, I was a little taken back by that as well, either charge more, or it's not a money-making proposition, and I think y'all have probably learned that, and being in the city, I live, I pay double taxes. I live in city and mountain area, so I pay $6,700 worth of property in the city, also pay a school tax. And I don't have any kids in school, in the school now. So I get, I get to paying the city taxes, but I get services for my, for my taxes, and I appreciate what I do get. But I do, I do want us to have a good relationship with our municipalities. And I, too, with Facebook, do not do my business on Facebook. And I've had conversations with several public officials in this, in this ring about Facebook. I am not going to do my business on Facebook. And I appreciate Commissioner Kiger, I appreciate your comments about Facebook. It really causes a lot of issues. There's a lot of misinformation, and that's why where we're at. There's a lot of misinformation. But this, this board wants to be a partner with our municipalities. We want to be good partners with all of our municipalities. But we also want to know things, and when you decided not to fund this position, this board should have known then, not read the paper, the day after we passed the budget, I read the paper, and I'm like, probably, you know, we've got another SRO position to fund. That should not happen. So I hope we learn a lesson from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anything else? Well, I'll just say, I was sorely disappointed to realize late in the game, just a few weeks before school started, that there was not going to be an SRO officer in every school. I thought we had, we had successfully heard the request for how many it will take to be complete, to have an SRO officer at every school in Surrey County. With the world that we live in, we just decided that song had already been sung, and this is the world in which we live, and we put student safety first. Public health, public safety, student safety first. I was sorely disappointed to hear and didn't even, couldn't even hardly believe it, that it was not going to be whole, that we did not have one at the Pilot Mountain Elementary. And, you know, you guys make those decisions as elected officials, and you decide whether to participate in the SRO program like the other municipalities do, or you decide to not fund them. You decide whether to have outdoor entertainment being used, that may turn out good, may turn out not good at all. Or you may decide that your taxation park is just for whatever you want to spend it on. I too am a double taxpayer. I have a office building in Pilot Mountain in the city limits. I, for one citizen, would be very happy if, going forward, if you would consider taking some of my Pilot Mountain Town tax money and appropriating some of it toward an SRO. I think we've already crossed that bridge as a county, as municipalities, and we care the lion's share of it. But we're very appreciative for the four municipalities that we have in our county, and three of which do help in that participation in providing SRO and a safe school situation for our children. We hope in the future you guys will consider it, and that's about enough said about that tonight. I think, I think the question is, where do we go from here? You know, the Surrey County Schools was kind enough to step up and provide at least temporary coverage with an SRO for every school, which we thought we already had, but when we found out Pilot Elementary did not, was not going to have one, you guys were able to send somebody there on day one, and we appreciate that. Problem is, you guys spend money, but you don't, you don't collect it. The problem for us is, we have to collect it, and then we have to decide where to spend it. So I think the bigger question tonight, moving forward on hopefully a more positive note, and we'll hopefully, we'll all live to see another happier day, but I think this board probably needs to accept either tonight or very soon in the future, the challenge of what are we going to do about this problem? If Pilot Mountain isn't going to fund an SRO officer at their Pilot Elementary School, which they had done previously, and which we all had hoped and anticipated that they would continue, then I think somebody's going to have to step up and do that. And if you guys are not going to fund that position at Pilot Mountain Elementary, and if you, the schools, only spend money but don't have any way to collect it, then I think it's going to fall on this board tonight to decide if we need to appropriate it. And I, for one commissioner, am going to say, you know, let's put student safety first. Public health, public safety, we always say is number one. Nothing more important than public health and safety than our, safety of our kids and our schools. And if that's what's got to be, then our board's going to step up, and we're going to fund that position. And we're going to, we're going to give you an opportunity next year to reassess it at Pilot Mountain, and I hope that you will reassess it. And maybe going forward, we will do it a little differently. But for this moment, and for this time, and for this hour, I'm going to suggest that we just go ahead and officially figure out a way. Chris, how, how are we going to do that after passing a budget? Are we going to be able to address that if we were just to want to do that tonight?
Well, we'd need to create a position for the SRO at Pilot Mountain Elementary. We'd come back at the next meeting with a budget amendment and some, probably an item and consent from HR, formalizing that, but at least the sheriff would have what he needed to go ahead and get that process started.
Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Needham, they might want to have a little...
Yeah, I was going to give him one in a minute, but I was going to let y'all finish up here.
I'm going, I'll make a motion that we fully fund the SRO position at Pilot Elementary School with a Surrey County deputy.
And I'll second that, and so we'll move forward with that, Mr. Manager. The next meeting, we will come with hopefully the information. It'll take what?
Is there a motion in a second?
Yep, there was. Motion, Commissioner Goins, second for me. Any discussion, gentlemen, that we can move forward and at least be able to address the next meeting, the proper and official way to fund this with all the partners, the sheriff's department, the Surrey County Schools, and this board funding it.
And possibly Pilot Mountain.
And, and we'll, we'll be open to you guys changing your mind on that, but yeah, well, hold on.
I think if you ask, we're going to take the main responsibility. Is that what you're saying?
That is, if it's fallen on us to do it, that's what we're going to do.
Okay, that's, that's my discussion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move forward in that position, in that posture in order to complete that funding, and any other discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Let it be known, it's passed unanimously, this board's going to step up, and we will fund that position if we're the last person standing to fund. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Can't say go to heaven, that's wrong.
What's that?
You can't say go to heaven.
But everything else stays the same from the last meeting that we discussed it.
Is this gonna take actions?
Yeah, have a public hearing and then it will take action.
And at when will that happen?
Tonight, you have a public hearing scheduled.
Oh, we do have a public hearing scheduled here?
Yes.
Okay, yep. All right, well, I guess we need to open the public hearing and see if we have any comment on the suggestion of Penny Harrison, our tax administrator, on the change in the verbiage for the road naming petition that she has just mentioned. And so is there any comment? Public hearing is now open for comment on our road naming petition changes and the rules regarding new road names. Okay, hearing none? We're gonna close the public hearing. Gentlemen, Chris, we need action tonight.
Take action tonight or at any future meeting. I would suggest go ahead and take action tonight.
All right, gentlemen, I'm looking for action and a motion to either agree to this or kick it down the road. I'm not taking actions, I'm taking motions or requests.
I'll make a motion that we approve the road addressing ordinance as presented by our tax administrator, Penny Harrison.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Carries unanimously. And the request for the changes on the road naming petitions as and rules has been granted. All right, next, Penny.
The next thing I have are the request to schedule tax foreclosure sales. I have a total of fourteen parcels, which are actually twelve sales. And the Canyon Law Firm is ready to set a date. It'll be the latter part of September, first part of October. I have visited these parcels, these properties, and I have anything that had an address. The appraisers have taken pictures for you, and I've included those in your packets.
I got a question about a couple of them. Number six, I was looking at it today and...
It's like...
Tax value, six thousand dollars, proposed opening bid, twenty-four thousand, one hundred dollars.
That's a shame. I understand it's because of the foreclosure fees and things like that. This is a vacant piece of property, and this is the only way that I can get this property back on the scrolls. I mean, I...
I didn't see quite that big of discrepancy.
I know.
Some of the others.
I looked to make sure if, when was the last time they were paying taxes today? And we've been writing off the taxes for years on this property.
Penny, I want a follow-up question from Commissioner Marion. Just say that one piece of property right there, opening bid twenty-four thousand, one hundred, the tax value is six thousand. What happens? What happens if nobody bids?
It'll go back to the county.
County, then we'll have a, then we'll sell it.
Yes, as surplus.
As surplus.
Yes, sir.
That one over there on two sixty-eight near Elkin is point one eight seven acres? That, that's not big enough to put a doghouse or a rabbit gum on.
Let me see. Look at it. Number four. And that's just a piece of...
Wow, okay. About like that school property that the school found from the two hundred years ago from over, over pilot, I guess. Those oddball pieces that, yeah.
We've been writing off the taxes on that one.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else regarding foreclosure sales, Penny? You're here tonight to ask the board permission to proceed in these...
They will post the signs two weeks prior to the sale, and they will send me, the Canyon Law Firm will send me the pictures of where they posted all of the signs.
Which will be the first joint, first effort in starting down that road of foreclosure.
Well, actually, when they post the signs, it'll be two weeks prior to the sale date, and then we will sell the property at the judicial center.
Okay. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Well?
I'll put them out there. I make a motion to put all the properties out, out for bid.
Okay, we have a motion. Do the latter proceed with tax foreclosure sales. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Any questions? Anything else? We have a motion in a second. No discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Penny?
So, I have brought you an account that's called First Run LLC, and it is the Creekside Cinema. And we have worked with this account for several years. And the reason I'm bringing you this account to recommend for foreclosure is because they owe eighty-six thousand dollars. And I have emailed, I have called, I have, I've done everything I can to try to collect these taxes. And normally, well, it's a must, is, you know, everyone owes five years of delinquent taxes before it's approved, before it is sent to the Canyon Law Firm. So, I know it's a lot of money, and so I, today, I, I made a final attempt to contact First Run again. And he told me, the guy, this, I think his name is Steven Schultz, yes, Steven Schultz. He said that he would pay the money, he was getting a loan, and he's gonna pay the money thirty to sixty days, that he's hoping that he's gonna do some renovations, and he's gonna try to make it, you know, something better for our community. So, I would like to withdraw tonight.
Is that still open, that Creekside Cinema? Is it open? Can you go there and watch a picture?
Yes, yes. And I don't think you can wa, I don't think you can go into every one of them. Yeah.
Okay.
So, so his request was in thirty to sixty days, he'd get back with a payment, or he'd pay it full, or he'd...
He would pay.
Find an amount, or...
He said he would pay it in full. He doesn't wanna file bankruptcy. He thinks that if I send this to foreclosure, that he's going to, it'll jeopardize his loan. That's what he told me today. He's told me this numerous times, but I told him that I was bringing it to the board.
Can we do this on a sixty day, give him sixty days and then, and then go?
Come back if it's not paid. Okay.
Everybody, gentlemen, good with that? Larry, you got it?
All right.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm saying we could, we could vote, we could vote to do this in sixty days. If he hadn't paid it in sixty days, this goes into effect.
How much time would it be after that?
I mean...
He's, he's the top owing taxpayer. He's, he's our top owing taxpayer in the county.
And he's owned it for how long? That he owes it?
Well, he hadn't paid it for four years, and now he owes another year, so it's about five years he's not paid taxes.
Four years delinquent in the current year.
You could give her, or...
Go ahead.
Uh, you know, you could give the sixty days, but go ahead and give her the authority on day sixty-one, not to come back and go ahead.
Just give you authority after sixty days. Good with that?
Good with that. Everybody? All right, I make a motion that we give notice that at day sixty-one from today, that we go ahead and proceed and let him know that by phone and by email and by letter and every other way that you can inform him, and on day sixty-one, we will proceed with foreclosure.
I will.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Goins. Any discussion?
And he, he knows that, that there'll be foreclosure fees and attorney fees and all of that stuff that this...
Yes, because the Canyon Law Firm has already, I asked him to send him a demand letter, just a demand letter. Ask him for payment. He didn't respond.
I, I want him to respond on that he received what you're sending him.
I'll send it certified.
Okay.
And you'll call him too, just to give it a personal touch, so he will understand we are about to take action on day sixty-one?
Yes.
Okay.
I will.
All right. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Any dissent? None. Okay. Penny, next item.
The last thing I have, last item I have is just a request to write off the two thousand and fourteen taxes. I have attempted to collect these. There's a ten-year statute of limitations. It's thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-one cents.
Well, we've tried every way in the world. You don't think there's any way to get them?
If it's still in the foreclosure process, the Canyon Law Firm will include that in the foreclosure action.
All right. Gentlemen?
Most of that, we approved the write-off request for two thousand and fourteen taxes.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Do we have a motion by Commissioner Goins? I've made the second that we write off, give her permission to write off two thousand and fourteen taxes uncollectible, deemed to be uncollected. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you, Penny. All right. Okay. Ed Waltz, our county attorney, and I believe we're going to have a couple of items. Nuisance of appeal finding a fact and the matter concerning the Red Hill Creek Community Center. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. First of all, I would remind the board that this is not a hearing. This is a follow-up for the hearing that occurred at the last meeting, and that hearing was closed. By way of history, I would also remind you that this, this evening, this board unanimously approved the minutes of the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, and included this language. Upon motion of Commissioner Goins seconded by Vice Chairman Marion, the board voted unanimously to affirm notice of violation and order of abatement for seven ninety-one Galax Trail in Mount Airy. And by way of backup, I'll remind the board that an NOV issued from Surrey County Development Services on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Property owned by Crystal Ritter, and Ms. Ritter is here. And the NOV ordered, or found the notice of violation and ordered abatement. Evidence included a sixteen-tab binder, which was distributed to this board and to Ms. Ritter. And additionally, witnesses provided evidence to this board, including William T. Swain, a private eye, Marty Needham, Director of Development Services, Dr. Richard Brennerger, a local veterinarian, Dr. David Ackerman, another local veterinarian, Harley Dixon, and Bledsoe Doris Taylor, Ron Cockrum, and Crystal Ritter. The board found that Doctors Brennerger and Ackerman were experts with regard to veterinary medicine and were able to form and express opinions on medicine, animals, rat infestation, dangers and risk of transmission of disease and parasite transmission. Board concluded there was substantial incompetent and material evidence to uphold the notice of violation. Board found that Ms. Ritter's residence was not a bona fide farm. The board found that a public health and safety nuisance exists on the subject property as defined by chapter ninety-two of the Surrey County Board of, I mean, Surrey County Ordinance Code. Or, I mean, the board found that Ms. Ritter had failed to abate the rat infestation. She also failed to remove trash, mattresses, garbage, animal feces, and excess contaminated animal feed. Proposed order was circulated in your package. And... Notice, the proposed order of abatement would require Ms. Ritter to comply with the action of this board within thirty days. That would include removing all trash, mattresses, garbage, animal feces from the property, and remove all loose scattered animal feed from the premises and provide timestamp photographic documentation to Development Services that this has occurred. She would need to engage and employ a North Carolina licensed rodent removal service to remove all rats from the interior and exterior of the premises and furnish Development Services with a fully executed agreement accomplishing the same. Within sixty days of the date of the order, Ms. Ritter shall furnish to Development Services the aforementioned licensed rodent removal service that the rodent infestation has been cured. Ms. Ritter fails to comply with those matters, county is authorized to take all necessary action to remove, abate, and remedy the rat infestation, trash mattresses, garbage, animal feces, and excess animal feed at the subject property. County may also take such further legal action as it deems required to remedy the public health and safety nuisance. The expense of the action to remove, abate, and remedy shall be paid by Ms. Ritter, and if not paid within a reasonable time, not to exceed sixty days from the notice, there'll be a lien placed on the land, the premises is located in seven ninety-one Galax Trail, and the lien shall be collected as unpaid taxes. Assuming the board is in agreement with terms of the order, a motion in a second to adopt order and abatement process would be proper.
All right. Gentlemen? Thoughts, actions? Entertaining motions?
Make a motion that we... All this abatement order as, as presented.
Okay. Well, good enough, Ed?
Yes, sir.
All right, good. Thank you, Commissioner Goins. Do I hear a second?
Second, sir.
All right, second for Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, none opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, this is a little unorthodox, but I would like, I would like for the order to be executed now so we can give Ms. Ritter a copy of it instead of waiting till after the meeting.
What action do we need to execute the order now?
Ask the clerk to provide a copy of the order for your signature, his attestation, and that would be it.
All right, gentlemen?
Andrew, can we do several copies?
Bill, can you give me a motion on that, allow the clerk to provide that to take action?
We need to do action on that? I'll make a motion that we provide Mrs. Ritter with a signed copy of the order of, of appeal and notice of violation and order of abatement.
A motion to execute the order to take action for the appeal and abatement. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir.
You seconded that?
Yes, sir.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor to execute tonight on this order, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones, anything? Absolutely. Upon receiving your copy, you are excused, Mr. Jones. Uh, you know, this is really not a time for open forum. You've missed that. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna, since this is about you, and we're taking a little time here to take action, I'm gonna give you just about, I'm gonna give you a strict time. Can you do that for me?
Just have a question.
Yep, give you, give you a question. Go right ahead.
All right, I have some photos already of some of the things that need to be taken care of. Who do I give them to?
Okay, can you answer that, Mr. Attorney?
Report to the board. He's sitting there.
Okay, okay.
All right, your answer, is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritter. Okay. Okay. All right. Ed, while he's making copies, are we prepared to continue with your presentation? You wouldn't, we need to wind this up. We need to wind this up, or are you ready to move on with your presentation? Okay, proceed, please.
Sometime ago, this board received notice that the Red Hill Creek Community Council, Community Center located at one thirteen McMichael School Road in Dobson, had lost the Head Start program. County owned the facility, leased it to the Community Center, and this Community Center subleased it to Head Start. This board surplus the property, and the sale notice was published in the Mount Airy News, and we ended up with a bid that I have not seen. Board has taken no action on that. I've been in dialogue with President of the Community Center, Gail Brown, and her lawyer, Sharon Lou, both of whom are here. Ms. Brown has expressed an interest in keeping the Community Center as a community center. And currently, she suggested that they continue the dollar-a-year lease, but she would like an option to purchase the building. I had given her a laundry list of things that I felt the board would need to have in hand to digest what that proposal is. And among those things were a detailed budget, business plan, indication of how expenses would be paid and how revenues would be generated, some indication that the proposed use is consistent with a charitable organization as defined by the IRS. And she has provided some of that, but not all of that. And I think that Ms. Brown feels stymied because she doesn't know how to develop a pro forma budget without knowing whether the building's gonna be available for their use. So, we have a building. We have a lease. County has no revenue to support that lease other than the dollar a year. And we have desire of Ms. Brown and other officers of this organization to try to keep it in the community as a community center. And again, we, we have surplus the property, and we have an offer on it. So, the board needs to either accept the offer or take no action on the offer and determine whether additional time should be granted to Ms. Brown to fine-tune her budget process for use and to establish that proposed use would be in compliance with IRS regulations.
And your opinion on that status right now of compliance?
I don't have enough of a business plan to know. Several other items that had been suggested, education for staying drug-free, growing old gracefully, parenting skills, healthy lifestyle, preserving foods, canning, freezing, growing gardens, financial advice, geriatric exercise, special needs children services, so, and birthday parties. They'd like to build a walking trail. I don't think any of those activities, maybe with the exception of birthday parties, is inconsistent with IRS regulations. But I would like to have more, I would like for your, this board to have more detail about the long-term future of the facility and the realistic expectation of operating it successfully.
So, do they have a proposed budget for the business or a business plan or an entity official name or an organization or any kind of nonprofit status that's...
They are a charitable nonprofit.
Okay. Gentlemen?
And that was probably my, that was one of my questions, was you, you got thirty-six thousand in the bank, and over time, you said, well, you know, we can take care of this. Over time, thirty-six thousand dollars won't do it. So, you know, you gotta put a roof on it. I mean, those type things. But, but, but what I'm saying, this, hear me out, Dave. If something were to happen, you had to put a roof on it, you had to fix the air conditioning. I mean, over time, over time, thirty-six thousand dollars won't cover it. And, and we've been down this road with some other things, and what happens when folks like you, folks like you that are wanting to do this, are gone? Who, who, who will, who will pick it up and take it on? And that, that, that's a concern. That's a concern for me. We don't have to make a decision tonight. But, but those are probably some good, some good, some good questions to be answered. Is, you know, how, how do you, how do you raise money going forward? What happens, what happens when people leave? You know, you're not, you're no longer able to do it. Who picks it up to do? I mean, that's, that's a concern when you, when you give, you give this kind of leeway to an organization and it's... and it's only a handful of you. There's only a handful of you here, uh, tonight that, that wanna take it on. And, and, and a lot of valid points. I mean, a lot of great points. Uh, but at the same time is how, how do you sustain this money-wise and what's best for your community?
And Ms. Brian, if you, if you wanted to comment, just because a lot of other people listening, are you able to come to the microphone again? Have dialogue if it's not too inconvenient for you? Thank you.
When we, um, let Head Start take the program, and then I didn't know, when, my understanding and all the community members that were, were involved in the community, we always thought that that's the way the system, that the center would work, that we would pay a dollar a year. Uh, we didn't even know that the county helped the deed. We always thought that Kyle Norman, which I knew personally, he was a family friend of our family, and he always said that, you know, he donated land to the community. And until it was in the paper, I had a neighbor call me and say that it was put up for sale. And so, see, we couldn't, it was all done without my knowledge. I just thought when Head Start left that we would continue the dollar and keep everything going the way we had in the past. When we let Head Start move in, when they brought in their educational and set up their cubbies and all this, the community no longer had, could use the building. That's why I asked them to put a building out there and put their supplies in it in the summertime. Well, that went, that didn't work. They didn't do that, which, you know, by that time, the community had gone, gotten used to not having the building. Um, but now that they have left and we've saved all this money, which I know is not much, but it's enough till we can get back on our feet and start the community center all over again. And there's, there's more than what's here tonight. I just didn't think I needed to bring a lot. And we've got, you know, our, yeah, our children are interested in it. Misty, she's young. My daughter is interested in it. Mr. Sweeney's children are interested in it. They all live in that community and our community or in, or in community, ever what, they want to see the community to prosper too. So, I know it's, I know, but I, the only way that we've always raised money is just by having events, you know? But, so.
You, you plan to, you, you're, to raise your revenue, you plan on raising money from the community? And, and what is your, your business model? What are you thinking that you probably are going to do with this bill?
Well, we really hadn't thought that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a suggestion. And we, we don't, we don't have to make a decision tonight. Is give you until September sixteenth. That's
Okay.
Two meetings, two meetings from now to bring back, to bring back kind of a plan of what, what your vision for Red Hill Creek Community Center? What your vision for that, a business plan? You know, how, how you gonna sustain this going forward? Because to me, that's a, that's a big deal is, is how, how, how you, how you sustain it without coming back to this board saying, we, we don't have enough money to do this.
Right.
We need your help. Uh, because, you know, if we give it to you, then our smell's gone, you know? Well, I wish we hadn't, hadn't taken this on, but at the same time, having a plan in place is, is really important. Yep, and so that gives you, that gives you some time to do that.
Okay. Um, let me, I'm sorry.
Counselor, in the meantime, what about the action that this board's already taken to surplus this property? And having an active bid having been placed? Where does that leave us on previous action?
There's no timeframe at all. I mean, uh, this board can defer action on the offer and can extend the term of the surplus status.
Okay. Does that take action tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who, who, what, what was the offer and who was it from?
I haven't seen the offer.
Oh, okay. I haven't, I don't know that I have either.
Is that not, is that factual? There is been an offer?
My understanding.
Yes, my understanding.
You all don't know the offer? I mean.
I don't know the specifics.
Yeah, it's here somewhere, but.
Was it a hundred and nine?
A hundred and something.
A little over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's not, no, that's, I, I did, the board did see that in a, in our, yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
All right, what, what was the building, what was the purpose of the building being there? Who built it? I, I'm understanding HUD funds built the building. For what purpose?
For a community center and so on. I was so young when it, when I, but I remember it was a big to-do and William Penn. I don't know, it's, I, I can't remember, but all I know is they got Mr. Norman to donate the lo- the property to, and, and then he, William Penn, and he's standing gone now, I'm sure. Um, he came in with and built the, the building and that's, it was just, we were gonna have, it was just to be a community center.
Okay, so that was the purpose?
Mm-hmm.
Do we all agree to that?
Yeah, I think we can agree to that.
We can all agree that there was
I think Ms. Lou might have some information.
Government, US government, the HUD come in and built the community center.
Right.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to, she, do you have comments? Would you like to, would you like, well, if you will, please come up to the podium here, please.
More to that question, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a few more.
There's actually recorded in Book twelve thirty-seven at page eight eighty-nine of the Surrey County Register of Deeds, a document dated April eighteenth, two thousand and eight between the County of Surrey, Red Hill Creek Community Council and the Yacke Valley Economic Development District. Um, and it talks about the, um, lease for the community center. So it specifically says that, um, construction of a community center.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now, and the deal was that the county, I assume we, we took ownership of it? Is that, I assume that deed also?
The deed was from, from, yes, the deed was to the Surrey County.
Okay.
Yes.
And so Surrey County and part of that agreement that we're gonna charge Red Hill one dollar a year rent? Is that a correct statement?
Um, let me look here, because of course, these are probably just memorandum of the lease. There's two, actually two, uh, the first one, the one I mentioned that was done in two thousand and eight. Let's see if it talks about a price.
All the documents we've seen have said, you know, the lease was a dollar a year.
Okay, that's probably true.
All right, now, the reason.
Yeah, it does, it does.
Hey, the reason that you decided to sublease it to Ivede? I mean, that was your choice, what to or not to? Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
So y'all chose to sublease it to Ivede due to lack of interest or?
No, it was, it was, uh, because it was going to benefit the community. It was the Head Start program.
Right.
But we didn't realize that when, once they entered the building, that they were gonna, you know, take up all the space and it could no longer be used in the community any longer.
Right, and you charged them, you charged them so much a year or?
Four hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Four hundred and fifty dollars a month?
And we didn't go up on the rent.
Okay.
And we paid the power bill.
Okay. I need to know. Well, I, I'm glad you paid all that. Did you, did you pay us a dollar a year?
Yes, I think the Head Start program paid the dollar.
I'll pay it for you.
Well, if they didn't, we'll pay it. We'll pay it now.
I'll take care of it.
And I will, I, I would also like to add that then also recorded in Book sixteen fifty-eight at page five fifty-one of the Surrey County Registry is, um, I guess the continuation, extension of the lease. And it's for a period beginning September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, ending September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Yeah.
But, but y'all come up with some type of an agreement for them to end or did y'all even know anything about it?
Yes, they contacted me and told me they were going to, um, not have the Head Start program there any longer. And I said, okay, and
Okay.
I thought we'd take it back and.
This dialogue got started, um, when I was directed to, uh, get all the responsible parties to terminate the lease.
Right.
That Ms. Lou just referred to.
And, and they did?
Well, um.
Okay.
Circulated and so far, no one has signed it.
Okay.
Ivede has indicated a willingness to sign it, but they want, uh, two thousand dollars for playground equipment and a fence. And I've indicated to them that the fence and the playground equipment are fixtures. And, uh, it's unlikely that this board would like to pay them for that.
But ma'am, and, and Red and Mr. Chairman, it sounds like to me, we still got some unfinished business to take care of.
Well, it's just.
And the only reason we surplus it is we knew what we knew at that.
Right, right.
Um, Ed, is there any, was this a part of grant or what kind of grant was this from the government?
HUD grant.
HUD grant. Have, have the terms of their ability to clawback or claim any interest, have they expired?
Expired and, uh, some documentation, well, some, uh, research was expended in terminating that. And HUD has, uh, indicated that whatever proceeds from any sale of this building would be county, uh, revenue.
So they're done with it?
Ma'am, one more, one more question for you. I, I'm gonna assume unless you tell me otherwise, that the money you have in the bank probably come from that four hundred and fifty, that, four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Is that a correct statement?
Some of it, yes, but now we had, we had money in the bank
You did, okay.
From where the community
Right.
Had, had raised.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next gentleman?
Yeah, I, I'll just be brief. Uh, the, um, uh, the, the quick action in, but I wanna say on behalf of this board to surplus this property, and these are just generalized statements, um, comes from the fact that we've had a lot of properties that, that, that we simply don't need, that has become a headache to us. One was the old J.J. Jones School. One was the old Westfield School. Um, and we surplus those properties and we gave, gave some of them away, but sold some of them. Um, it's just been the policy of this board to get rid of problem children. And, um, you know, there was, um, you know, vandalism up there. I mean, they stole the pipes out of the way and all that stuff. And it, it just was something that, and we're not in the rental business. I mean, we're in the business to help communities for sure. Uh, but as far as us owning real estate for community purposes, uh, you know, it just, our, this board hasn't had much of a policy. We tried to get rid of that, but, um, I, I agree with Commissioner Goins that we need to digest this, I believe, a little bit more. And that's what I would be in favor of doing.
All right, gentlemen, we've got a consensus on that. Is that good, Ed? All right, we're gonna kick this can down the road to the meeting of September the sixteenth, and we'll have that discussion again.
All right.
You will, uh, have your thoughts and your business plan and, and, uh, your direction on where you're going. And, uh, we'll be happy to hear you again.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Brian.
Very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
That's fine, that's fine.
Anything else, Ed?
Yes, sir, um, I would like to put on the record that Ms. Ritter did receive her signed order and abatement.
Okay, record so noted. Clerk, thank you. Okay, anything, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good, good evening. Uh, County Manager Chris Knoff, um, take it from here, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first item is one that was, um, uh, postponed from the last meeting until this evening. Uh, going back to the County Commissioner Retreat in February, the board had a very lengthy and detailed conversation with the Surrey County School Board about funds for design on the three high school campuses. Couple of months later, within the Surrey County Schools budget request, they did, um, they did request funds somewhere in the range of two point one million to three million, which was an estimate at the time for architectural designs for master campus planning and phase one high school renovation projects. That money, even though it came as a part of the budget request, is not something we would pull from general fund. If you were to award an amount of money, it would come from the Dedicated Capital Improvement Fund. And then at some point in time in the future, the projects in which these funds were utilized, when we were to issue debt for those projects, we would borrow money to replenish what we spent on design. In addition to that, there was a request from staff to allocate two hundred thousand dollars for the similar purpose to take a look at the request from the judges over in the Judicial Center Annex, which is the former two thousand and two jail, as well as potential renovations in the nineteen seventy-four sheriff's office and the nineteen seventy-four jail. There were two specific requests here. Uh, I would take up the, the public school one first. I know the, uh, Dr. Reeves and the school board have remained to answer any questions there. But, um, now that we've kind of through the budget process and through the summer, now would be an appropriate time to consider action.
As you're looking for action on design fees at Surrey County Schools and the Sheriff's Office Judicial Center. All right, gentlemen, thoughts?
I'd like to hear from a member of the board or, or, uh, Dr. Reeves about these design, design fees. What does it entail and, I think, thanks to an old man, a whole lot of money, design fees.
Certainly, Commissioner Johnson. So what, the industry standard is seven to ten percent of the total cost of the project. So, we're looking, uh, again, when we talk about phase one, uh, it's kind of a moving target. And you understand as you, as you've completed the jail and other, other projects, you really don't know what the market rate is per square foot. And it, it goes up and down. But we're looking, if phase one is thirty million dollars and we're, our phase one, we're looking at a new kitchen and cafeteria at East Surrey High School and at Surrey Central High School. Those are the two top priorities. We talked about those. We went, I think it was March twentieth, we went on the visit and we toured all three high schools. And, um, we ended at North Surrey, so you could kind of see the difference. Because it was, I think, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, a, a new kitchen and cafeteria were constructed at North Surrey High School. So we don't have the same issues at North Surrey that we have at Surrey Central and at East Surrey, where we have an original kitchen, we have an original cafeteria. And in both schools, we have students eating some days in the floor. We have kids sitting on stairs. We have kids on picnic tables outside if it's pretty, inside if it's not. I mean, we're just really, those kitchens and cafeterias, uh, the cafeterias are not large enough. And the kitchen space is really, uh, really too small and it's not conditioned properly. It's really, um, hot. Uh, working conditions are tough for, uh, our cafeteria ladies. And Sherri Parks advocates every year. So I say all that to say, what we think is important as a board, the board and I have talked about this, and this is kind of the conversation we had on February twenty-eighth. We've purchased twenty-three acres of land here at Surrey Central. We've purchased, uh, about ten to twelve acres at, at East Surrey Pilot Mountain. We purchased nine acres at North Surrey. The new, the new Loop, by the way, is fantastic. If you don't believe me, ask that guy right back there. He directs traffic every morning and said traffic's the best he's seen it. Um, but if you think about the master campus plan, we've got this new property. What does the school look like ten years from now, twenty years from now? How do we utilize those properties? So the board, we, we want to go ahead and design what that master campus plan looks like, utilizing the additional property and go ahead and have that work done. And phase one, which would be that kitchen and that cafeteria, go ahead and do that work so that if we do receive a needs base grant, we're not waiting two more years to get. two more years to get an architect under contract and a design completed, because it takes twelve, eighteen months sometimes to get all the detail work. So we wanted to be shovel-ready, and that's one of the criteria points of the needs base grant, are you shovel-ready? And, and to be honest, we're not exactly shovel-ready, even when I come back to you and present in two weeks, which will be on these two, I'll be presenting, that's what we're going to be asking for, is, is phase one renovations, hopefully. And we can include these design fees for those two renovations inside that, that ass that we had for DPI. So we'll do that, so you could recoup some of those costs. But that's really what it is, Commissioner Johnson, master campus plan, where's the new front entrance, where's the bus parking lot, where's the student parking lot, where's the front, where, where would we put a kitchen and cafeteria? Go ahead and have that architect design that, and then, in phase one, go ahead and then design that kitchen and cafeteria, all the way down to your HVAC needs, electrical needs, plumbing, all the detail work that, that we could really go and bid out, when and if we had funds available.
Okay, Chris.
I think that pretty well sums it up. If the board were inclined to take action, it would require that to allocate up to a certain amount for these purposes.
Gentlemen.
Well, as I understand, just like you said, this doesn't come out of general funds, comes out of the capital, and the money, the money's there, so I feel like this, spending this money would be very wise for us. So I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's for both the.
Surrey County Schools.
Design fees. How about part of the manager's request? Chris, was you also wanting to add in the Sheriff's Office Building and Judicial Center? Or you want two different motions?
You can do it either way, I just wanted to make sure we had a separate conversation for their benefit.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we.
We can talk about the other before.
Do it to, what is your motion, to include one or both, Mr. Chairman?
Well, my motion was for the design phase for Surrey County Schools, sir.
Okay, all right, have a motion. For that range, or you're saying from, what's the finite total, Mr. Johnson? It says here, a requested range of two point one to three million dollars, so we'll get this right.
I'll, I'll go along with what they requested.
What are you requesting, Chris?
I would guess not to exceed three million.
Okay, let's make a motion not to exceed, is that okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
All right, have a motion for Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor of approving the design fees for the Surrey County Schools' requested project for architectural designs, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. All right, gentlemen, got that one down.
Good.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Okay.
Don't put anything on Facebook.
All right, gentlemen, on the next part of the request by the manager to consider a two hundred thousand dollars for the architectural drawings or fees for the Sheriff's Office Building and Judicial Center, any action on that? What's your pleasure?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm certainly game, but I think the, I think the mark, the mark was two hundred thousand dollars to allow.
Yeah.
For those fees.
Yes, sir.
I, I'll be very anxious for us to get that started soon, so I'll make that motion.
All right, motion for Commissioner Johnson on two hundred thousand dollars for architectural fees for the Sheriff's Office Building and Judicial Center. I'll second that motion, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Who would those, how would the process go to develop that design and expend these monies?
Chris.
Finance will develop an RFQ, Request for Qualifications for Professional Services.
Mm-hmm.
And once we have that, we'll run it through consent, and once you approve it, we will solicit.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Any other questions, comments? Motion and a second on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Chris?
Next item, you've had these draft legislative goals for a little over a month now, we've been talking about them for at least two and a half months. They are in the form of a resolution. If you were content with those, they were solicited from department heads and board members. I need to turn in our submissions to the Association of County Commissioners this week. They'll start their process through the fall of prioritizing, and there'll be a Legislative Goals Conference before Thanksgiving in November, and the board will need to send a voting delegate to that event. So this just requires board action, unless you all have any changes, additions or deletions.
Gentlemen, any deletions, changes, recommendations, new add-ons? Being none, I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution adopting our county's legislative goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal years. We'll hear a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bill Goins, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I had thought earlier about some things, but I think that legislature is addressing some of them. One of them is require all sheriffs in North Carolina to work with ICE. Of course, under the present administration, ICE don't work with nobody with law enforcement very well. They want to keep as many criminal aliens in the country as they can. And the other one is, was abolishing DEI out of our university system, and, because it is highly and patently discriminatory. And so, but legislatures, I said, address those, so I'm good with these.
All right.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Being none, and I think school, I wish our school friends hadn't left so early, there was one in there I would like for them to have heard, and that is the public school choice issue. I think that's a valid issue, but, Mr. Clerk, you be sure to make sure they get a copy of this, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Carry, the motion carries unanimously. Chris, next item.
So in Invest in Surrey, there was three hundred dollars allocated for a couple of river access projects. Priority was given to the air rat, primarily because, number of years ago, the county put an access on property we owned on two sixty-eight. While coming from the north and using two sixty-eight as a exit point is not a problem, folks who are getting in at two sixty-eight are finding sometimes hard to believe it takes a long time to go fifteen miles to eat a bean. And so it has created some situations for private landowners where people are tired, worn out, trying to get on private property to, to get back to their vehicles. So we have one access, due to a lot of hard work from Commissioner Johnson with Luckstone, it's actually in the process of being constructed, should be having a ribbon cutting soon. The other opportunity for an access actually creates a partnership possibility with the city of Mount Airy. They own property, it's described in the memo here from Daniel. It is city-owned, once it's built, the city has agreed to maintain it, so it wouldn't fall into the one that the, the ones that the county maintains. The county is being asked to participate either fifty percent or a hundred percent in construction. And what I mean by that is, if you consider about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction, the city's applying for a grant that would potentially pay half. If they don't get the grant, I think staff still feels like this is a worthy project and solves some of our issues on the air rat, that we would feel it would be okay to fund all of construction, especially since Mount Airy is going to take over permanent maintenance of the access. And Daniel, remind me of the exact location.
Newssum, on Newssum Street. Yeah, it's right off of Newssum, right there on, yeah.
Hey, gentlemen, your pleasure. They're looking to request that Surrey County Parks and Recreation enter into a three-way agreement with the County of Surrey and North Carolina Wildlife and the City of Mount Airy to build a public fishing access.
Well, does our, does our seventy-five thousand dollars, does it come from the grants that we've already received, or is this extra money?
Invest in Surrey.
Invest in Surrey money, okay, it's already there.
It'd be seventy-five if they get a grant. If they don't get a grant, it would be one-fifth.
But we still have the, we still can cover it, all right.
Hey, gentlemen, your pleasure.
I'd like to let Mount Airy know that they got plenty of grant money, and so, Mount Airy, did you hear that?
I'll make a motion that we approve this river access.
Fifteen million here and seven million here.
All right.
Cooperation with Mount Airy and North Carolina Wildlife.
All right, I'll second that motion, any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Carries unanimously. Chris, next item.
Next item, the deadline for the Great Trail State Grant's been extended, so we're going to pull that and bring it back later. And the next two items are Ms. Jessica Montgomery.
Okay, Ms. Jessica Montgomery, Public Works Director, welcome.
Thank you. The first one is a, we have a sewer force main that goes from the landfill, ties into the city of Mount Airy system. So we do not have a policy if people want to connect to this system. So this letter is just suggesting a policy that will piggyback off the city of Mount Airy doing exactly what they do, and there's a detail there for your, for your viewing. And this is just something that will allow someone, if they request to connect, something to go by. It would have to be an engineered system to overcome the pressure of the pipe, and the city of Mount Airy would have to be involved, since it is flowing into their system, they would do the billing. It's just allowing them to connect to our force main.
And this goes out all the way to, out there at Holly Springs?
Yeah, comes from the landfill.
It goes to the sewer plant in Mount Airy.
But it goes out there by the old Quality Mills and Outreese Road and all that, yeah.
Yes, it does. It dumps right there, right, right behind where Quality Mills used to be.
So you're asking us to recommend that Surrey County require the same connection?
Yes, that's correct. It would be this policy.
Is there any, what, what all is on that? Is, is the old Quality Mills there, is it on the sewer?
It's like Eagle car, it's not. I'm not sure if it is or not, that'd be this, it probably is with the.
So is there anything private hooked up to it? I mean, out through there?
On our system, no.
Oh, okay, nothing private?
Nothing is connected to it now.
Okay.
This would allow them to connect.
Mr. Commissioners, the reason, Jessica's in front of you tonight, is that the company on Sheep Farm Road is called Johnson Granite, has grown so much, they feel like this would be a good move for them, and they're, they've researched with Mount Airy and Surrey County, and this would be requirements. So if, if you wish to take action, I'm not an owner, but for public perspective, I would ask that I would abstain from voting on this matter. Okay, well, if it comes to that, we'll make a vote, but I, that's the reason that this, the homework has been done by Jessica, and what you're doing is comping what Mount Airy would require.
This is what Mount Airy requires, they have one person connected to their system.
Well, I don't, I don't see the downside to it, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. No, no, no cost, all it is is a permission, an okay, but what you're doing, you're opening up, anybody could do it, as long as they do it this way, you know?
How long is that line total?
I'm not sure of the exact linear feet. Probably two miles. But where it connects.
I wasn't aware until she brought it to me that we own that line. I thought it was city-owned all the way to the landfill.
Yeah.
At least our property, so we, we, you know, when that line was built in the nineties.
Yes.
This policy should have been put in place then.
It's becoming more and more common for people to connect to sewer force mains, so back in the nineties, it wasn't common at all.
This is how the county got the pipe building and running the sewer out there to the airport.
Leach aid.
Yes, it takes the leach aid to put, to dump it there.
Yep.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? You want to take action on this, you want to kick it down the road? If you take action, we're going to have to ask, we're going to have to answer the request, Mr. Johnson.
If somebody wanted to connect, they still have to get the board's permission.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is just the policy. You're not giving anybody permission yet.
That's right.
So I don't think you would have to abstain, Ed, unless I'm wrong, from adopting the policy. But he might abstain if he came back later.
This could be anywhere.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. We, we were told that man, we would, that the company would submit to Mount Airy.
You will be, the property owner will be working with the city of Mount Airy and NCDOT, because you're going to be in the right of way as well.
Design of the pump station.
Okay.
Yeah, as to conform with Mount Airy's system.
And then.
Permission, actual permission to hook up would come from the county.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, okay, so it's kind of complicated, yeah.
Yeah.
Chris, you're right, the, there's no need to abstain from a policy decision, because it's not project.
What did he say? He said you don't have to abstain technically by the letter of the law, since it's a policy decision.
Unless you just want.
Unless you want to, that's your.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the policy. Well, I want, well.
Well, let's figure out if he's going to abstain, because he's got to get.
You don't have to.
Well, I know he does it, but.
Take care of it. I mean, it's dead, or I would propose that you come back in two weeks to vote on it. Why not do it tonight, if you don't have a problem with it?
Oh, we're adopting the policy.
Well, but then we're asking for permission, too.
We can have two separate actions.
Two separate actions, okay.
Motion to approve the policy, and then. Yeah, I'm, make the motion approve the policy.
In a second. Have a motion, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second, that's a motion by Commissioner Marion, second by Commissioner Goins, approve the policy. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to allow Commissioner Johnson to abstain on this action, to allow Johnson Granite to connect to the sewer line. Is that, is that what, yeah.
Okay, second from Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? Okay, motion to allow Mr. Johnson to abstain, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Four, zero, four, and one abstain. Okay.
Maybe the motion to allow that company to connect.
Yeah, now we're looking for a motion to allow Johnson Granite to hook up to the lines, is that what you're wanting? All right, looking for a motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to allow Johnson Granite to connect to the sewer line on, whatever road is that, what road is that? Hyatt Road, yeah.
Second.
Okay, have a motion from Commissioner Harris, second from Commissioner Bill Goins to allow Granite, Johnson Granite to hook up to the connection. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next one is USDA leases space from us in the service center. So this memo is actually two parts, a lease termination, and just so they can start a new one, and it's included for your review.
Okay, gentlemen, your pleasure on renewing the lease with USDA at the service center adoption, do I hear a motion? Is this your recommendation, Jessica?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Do you terminate and then new lease, or?
This is USDA, so it's never easy, so they won't terminate it and then new lease, same together.
I make a motion that we terminate the USDA lease and that we approve the new lease as presented by Public Works Director Jessica Montgomery.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Bill Goins, we'll hear a second.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Harris, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. All right.
Thank you.
Next. Chris, you got anything else?
Last item, we have a memo from, Andrew's put together for you for boards and committees. The planning board, we have a couple of terms that expire, as you know, we reconstituted that board last year, so a couple of them received one-year terms, Mr. Moser and Mr. Simmons, both willing to continue serving. They would be appointed to full three-year terms this time around, and then a two-year term expiring for Wanda Stanley on the jury commission, she is willing to be reappointed.
Hey, gentlemen, your pleasure.
I'll make a.
Did, you already contacted Brian Moser and Dean Simmons? Okay, good, good.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Brian Moser and Mr. Dean Simmons to the planning board for three-year terms, and Wanda Stanley to the jury commission, two-year term, or two-year term.
Okay, I guess I'll let it be in one motion?
Second.
I have a motion for Commissioner Goins and a second for Commissioner Marion to make the reappointments, that's expressed in interest and willingness to be able to serve again on the planning board and the jury commission, do I hear a second? Second. Who was that? Okay, Commissioner Marion, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Anything else?
We have a request for closed session after general county business. Your second item under county commissioners, we need to handle that item after closed session. Insurance renewal.
Uh, understood. Okay, gentlemen, general county business. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, you're on the end. I'll start with you.
Well, I, I just personally want to thank uh, all these four ladies here in front of you that work for the Surrey County Government. Our, our tax administrator. Don't think many counties around here say, collect the way we do. Must be your good looks, Penny. I don't have no, I know your crew. But anyway, thank you for all you do. And our finance, uh, just, it's so easy to understand, it's so important. Thank you so much, Laura. And Jessica, uh, I think she wears a lot of hats and she handles them very well. And I appreciate all that. And Sandy's uh, been working with her since she was five years old and uh, does a great job. And uh, and Daniel, I want to commend you and your staff for, for taking on some years ago special, our special folks. I, I was very proud tonight, and this was just the bowling team that went to the state. What else we got coming that we're going to recognize? Swimming. And that we've already recognized some, haven't we? Others? Well. Well, I, I, I won't, I think the commissioners probably already know it. They've been asked, asked, get, get asked every year, but we got the, the best fundraiser coming up, uh, the last of September. And I just want to make you aware of it. And what I see tonight is money, money well-raised. Thank you for all you do and, and also we got these two gentlemen right here and also three, Ed Wilks. They just, for over eight and a half years. If y'all weren't around, I wouldn't do it. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Johnson. Mister Harris?
I want to thank the chairman for sharing his pictures with me this week. Um, he, Van went bear hunting and uh, he treed a, a real nice bear down there and I was glad that he shared that picture with me.
I'll comment on that in a minute. Commissioner Marion?
I just want, just one thing, I had an opportunity to go to Wilmington a few weeks ago, uh, the inspectors convention. Uh, our very own Evan Connor was awarded Inspector of the Year of the State. And Keith Keiger, Lead Inspector, was promoted to Vice President of the State Council. So, Surrey County was well represented, represented. And I got burnt on a piece, so. Uh, had a good time, but uh, I'm, I'm just going to recognize those two, those two gentlemen and uh, proud of them.
Mister Goins?
Uh, only thing I have, I appreciate Ms. Foster for being here tonight, talking about animal shelter. Uh, I would like for us to, you know, at least open some dialogue, maybe with some vets and, and I do agree that $220 is a whole lot to, uh, to adopt a dog. And uh, I think, you know, I think surely we could do better than that. Uh, and maybe at some point offer, I know Rowan County does, I know some other counties do discount. They do like a discount month. Row, Rowan does a discount month. Uh, I'm not saying do it for free, but if we could discount it, uh, you know, we got to recoup a little bit of money on it. But I think $220 is steep uh, to, to adopt a dog. And I know I adopted one. I've had her probably eight years. I adopted her from Surrey. It was a hundred dollars at that point, so it's gone up, it's gone up quite a bit. Uh, we don't, we don't have a lot of participations from vets in the county. I think there's one vet that does uh, that does spay and neutering now. And uh, maybe we open some dialogue with some vets and see if we can't get something going uh, to try to help, help that situation. As I told Ms. Foster on the phone and, and we had, we had a good conversation and I appreciate, appreciate that conversation. Uh, this is a people problem. Uh, I don't know that government can fix it totally. Uh, but it is, it is a people, it is a people problem and, and people need to get their dogs and cats fixed. Uh, and uh, so that's, that's my opinion. And uh, but we need, we probably need to help, help with that when we, we adopt dogs out and see if we can't find a better way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins. I guess being that's under the purview of the Surrey County Sheriff's Department, the Animal Control and the facility, that would be a discussion we could open up and have. I too adopted a dog over there not so long ago and have been a proud owner of him ever since. As far as the bear hunting story, in all full transparency, I have two German shorthaired pointers in a chocolate lab and uh, they was having a real fit the other morning. And when I went out to the backyard to see if they had gone astray of pointing birds and started treeing squirrels, they had a bear tree in, a, a tree in my backyard. So, I was not hunting bear. I was hunting a way to get my dogs back in the pen and me to get out of there and give him graceful time to come on down. And he did and uh, and I did share some pictures with Commissioner Harris. But he went about his way and I, I did mine. I promised him if he wouldn't come down, I wouldn't go up there and mess with him. Uh, I appreciate everybody's participation tonight. Uh, some of these meetings are a little long and some of them are a little easier than others, some of them a little harder than others. It's uh, kind of the way the process goes. And uh, we appreciate everyone's participation. And uh, if we skin up any feelings, we'll uh, hope to live to see another day and have a better week. And we'll move on with the democracy and we'll move on with county government and coordination with all these other folks that we do business with. Thank everybody for your coming and for your participation. That's about it. And uh, with that, I'm looking for a motion to go into close. Motion of Commissioner Marion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second of Commissioner Goins, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are going to close. Thank you.
Okay. Who? Okay, we're back in session here, regular session. We're going to talk about concern of insurance renewals. Who's making the presentation? Is that you, Sandra? All right.
Okay, this is for our property liability insurance renewal, and I've got some key points for you on page one, and then a comparison between the two companies on page two. So our current insurance carrier is with Travelers. Surrey Insurance is the agent. Our current premium that we're paying this year is $750,659. We have a renewal quote from them of $891,500, which is an increase of almost $141,000. There was no additional quotes from private carriers. Surrey Insurance did reach out to several other people, but nobody really wants to take on a government very much right now. So I think our increase is due to several things, our loss ratios, we've had some large legal claims and reserves, and then just overall national trends. We got a quote from the Association of County Commissioners, and it is quite a bit cheaper, $536,206, so it's $355,000 cheaper. But my biggest concern is the umbrella policy. With Travelers, we have a $10 million umbrella coverage, and with the Association of County Commissioners, five would be the most that we can have. So that is a concern to me, not to have any more than that, because there has been situations recently when we've needed that additional coverage. Another thing that Association would do is appraisals. Once we went with them, would be completed on all of our properties, but that would not come until next year's renewal, when it would affect our premiums. But they would actually send somebody out to do those appraisals. I'm giving you some information on how many counties use the Association of County Commissioners. We have 59 counties that have both workers' comp and liability insurance through them. Counties that use it for workers' comp only, which includes us, is five counties. And then we have six counties that use the pool just for the liability property. Thirty counties don't use them at all. So what I need you to do tonight is decide if you want to go with the Travelers renewal, or if you want to switch to the Association of County Commissioners. And then also, we have VFIS, which is down near the bottom of the page. That is our insurance carrier for EMS. All other departments are covered, and all properties are covered with Travelers. VFIS basically concentrates on emergency services, and they're just like a nationwide company. We've used them for years and years and years. And their premium is also going up. Currently, it's $214,000. The renewal is $279,000. If you want to turn over to your next page, I have renewal comparison that shows the different coverages with Travelers and VFIS, a breakdown in the premiums there. We have tried to find another company that might provide us some additional umbrella coverage, but so far, we have not been able to find anyone. So there's just nothing that we're going to be able to do immediately to find that umbrella policy. I've reviewed this with Ed also. Ed, do you want to comment on any of it?
Umbrella is the most significant part of the package for me. Don't like paying much increase for the Travelers coverage, but I think we need it. I mean, our claims history has indicated the need, and so my recommendation would be Travelers.
I'll just say an increase of $141,000 in a renewal with the company that we're currently involved in, whilst there is some active upcoming litigation still going on that this company has us covered for now, considering the fact we can't find anybody else to give us more of an umbrella on top of what we have. I'm willing to gamble $141,000 for one year on a premium of the taxpayers' money, but I'm not willing to gamble giving up a $10 million umbrella down to a $5 million at this course in time. I would suggest, my opinion is, we stay the course with Travelers. They're the ones that's got us here. Let's see how these court cases come out, considering our history of liability and the fact that we cannot get, we don't know we're guaranteed to get $10 million umbrella from anyone, but right now, we're still covered. My suggestion would be we stay the course and then give us a little time until the next renewal time comes, and then we will make that decision and be a little bit better prepared to make it. That's my two cents on it. Umbrella is detrimental. Vote or consensus, Ed?
I have a motion.
Make a motion that we stay with Travelers Insurance Company, and that we do some serious searching between now and next renewal time to see what other options are available.
That's the EMS renewal also, VFIS.
Yeah, and approve the insurance renewal with Travelers and VFIS as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion and a second, end of discussion. There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Sandy.
Thank you.
Got anything else?
That's all I have.
Gentlemen, looking for a motion to adjourn? Motion from Commissioner Bill Goins. I second it. All in favor, please say aye.